Right hand. And after I'm done, just say I do very well. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council member in and for the city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw, and state of Michigan, to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
It's man. Same thing. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state. I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor in and for the city of Dexter, county of Washtenaw, and state of Michigan, to the best of my ability. I will. If you all please sign the. Form that put in front of you.
Above the date?
Above the date. Thank you. Thanks, Justin. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting in city of Dexter. Thank you for attending the swearing in ceremony. We will start with the call to order and then our and then. Sorry, we'll start with our pledge of allegiance and Bonnie, if you would please lead us ahead, I appreciate it. Ask everybody to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I understand Adam is on his way. Please call the roll.
Yes. Present. Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here.
Heating. Here. For Georgia.
Here. Excellent, we have the full council. And for. Item C on our agenda this evening is approval of the meeting minutes. On our city council meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there someone who'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes? To make the motion to approve the now. Thank you. Ken, did you note anything in the minutes that needed to be changed? Wow, isn't it? Other members of council. It's called vote to approve the minutes.
Schlock.
Yeah.
Summaferro.
Yes.
Griffin. Yes. Abra. Yes. Huber. Yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Theo.
Yes. Minutes approved, thank you. Item D on the agenda is prearranged participation. And I believe we have Mary Ann here, do we have Mary Ann here?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, she's been doing our farmers market end of the season presentation.
Yeah.
You're welcome to stand where you're comfortable. Are we pulling up the, what's in the back of it on the screen?
Want me to go up here?
Sure.
Okay.
Break in the podium.
I'll be back. Hi. I'm Mary Ann Webb, I'm the farmers market manager. This was my first year, so. I got to learn a lot and it was very fun and. I hope in next year I'll learn more and grow it more and. That everyone has it in their packet. Okay. So, submission is on the first page. You want me to read that, but. Basically, you know, we support community by giving vendors opportunity to offer goods and services in the city and there's a picture of the market. A successful market attracts visitors and provides a very important shopping option for Dexter citizens. This was our sixteenth year. And the next page are some snapshots of some of our produce vendors. I think I know some of you, seen some of you at the market. I thought we had a really great season, we had a lot of people coming through, we had some, a lot of our regular produce vendors were back. And we had some new ones this year. We had three new produce vendors and a mushroom vendor. And we had some new flower vendors and plant herb vendors. And then the next page is our meat vendors, we have four different meat vendors. And there's some snapshots of some happy market shoppers. And so I try to take pictures, well, I do take pictures every market and try to capture people. Joining the market and then what the vendors have, so I can put it on social media, so I can promote the markets, a lot of people wow and. See what's there and that way. And the next page, we had a lot of crafts as well, addition to produce and a lot of baked goods. We had some new jewelry vendors and clothes vendors and. We have a honey vendor and a lot of baked goods, we had a macaron vendor and a French baked goods vendor. And we had a coffee vendor this year that came every week, which was the hit. They had really good scones and pumpkin bread, a lot of people came back for that, I got a lot of comments about the coffee vendor, especially on the cold mornings, it was nice. And the hot mornings, they had ice cream. And on the next page, I do a newsletter, a lot of you are probably aware of it, but goes out to like over three thousand subscribers. And we do, I put a list of all the vendors and what they have for every week. And a vendor spotlight and put the special events out there. And any other news going on in Dexter, I really love doing the newsletters, I'm still doing it in a smaller version, just to. People don't forget about the market. And then the next page, we had a lot of food assistance programs. The, I don't know if you're all aware of them, but SNAP is a supplemental nutrition assistance program. And Double Up is for people that use the SNAP, they get a double matching amount of money to spend on produce. So, lower income people, it's a nice way for them to get fresh produce locally. And we had a senior, two senior programs, Senior Project Fresh and Senior Market Bucks, which was new this year. And that one was through Chelsea Hospital. And I think that one we made the most because I think he came three different times and gave out coupons, it's for over sixty. And they don't have to have an income requirement, so it was a way for seniors to get out and get fresh produce. We had a lot of people using that one, and I think because it was marketed so well and that he came out a lot. And then we also have the WIC, which is Women and Children. So I'm hoping next year to get more word out about these, I think it's really important, especially since it provides such a good service. And they do it at the winter market as well. And the next page, we made total revenue of forty-four thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars, which was good, it was more than last year, that was in our vendor fees. And total attendance, I try to take it every week and average it out, so I mean, this isn't totally exact. And then average vendor attendance, Saturday, we had a lot, we had more vendors than last year, it was average about eighteen. Sometimes we had a whole market, which was great. And Tuesdays is where I really want to work on. It's hard to get because we don't have a lot of customers and we don't have a lot of vendors coming, so we did meet downtown at Monument Park a couple times and. That brought more awareness, I think you just need more awareness that it's there, so maybe more marketing and signs. There's a picture of our billboard we had on Baker Road. And then the next page, we have, I just have some pictures in there, some highlights, we had a lot of, we had the Girl Scouts come and Eagle Scouts. And so picture of Owl Hall Bakery, they've been our vendor for thirteen years. And we had other, a lot of other Dexter Rotary came out, a lot of other groups came out to promote their services. And the next page is our social media, which I talked about. We have a lot of activity on Facebook and Instagram, I think it's a great way to get the message out, so I really try to keep that very active. With lots of pictures and vendor highlights. Great way to get out to a lot of people, so is the newsletter, I think. And then the next page is on our kids biz, which was. I bet my, I love it, I have an eight-year-old daughter, she wants to do it next year. But it's just fun for them to get out, learn about business and. A lot of people were, would ask about Maximilian shoes, he had carols and so he came a lot. And it's just cool to see them excited about selling something and learning, you know, the business part of it, so there's some pictures of that. And then we had a lot of events this year. We had the free bike maintenance in May and June, which is a really good highlight, a lot of people look for that. And that's a great free service. We had new live music every Saturday, we had some new musicians this year. We had the Kona Ice Truck came out and pumpkin painting and we had a big event with the library. It was a scavenger hunt and they gave money for each family to spend at the market. And that was, I think that was our busiest Saturday, so I really would like to work with the library more on some more events and collaboration. We had a master gardener booth this year, every, most weeks they would come out. And answer questions, which was really popular, we had a nutritional presentation, a garden club sale. And seriously Dexter sponsored tie dye and rock painting for us. So that always brings out more kids and families. I think the more family events we have, the better, it gets more customers out. And we had a Halloween dog cast, that was a big hit too. Then, oh, the next page is just some more events. And the National Honor Society came out and volunteered, which was very nice, because sometimes, you know, a lot of times it's me, so it's nice to have some volunteers when we have events. And the weeks that, it seemed like we were slow, we were Apple Days and Dexter Days, and I think that's because. Everything was downtown at Monument Park. And so maybe we could collaborate more with them next year. And then there's some customer comments in here, I won't read them all, but the one couple in there, that's. They've, Dan and Norma, they've been coming every year, I think, since it started, they come every week, they're very loyal, so it's nice to have our returning customers. Who are so loyal to the market, we have a lot of them. And a lot of people, like I said, love the music and the, and the produce vendors and the coffee. And the atmosphere and supporting the local community. And next year, I want to continue to recruit more vendors and products. And I'm going to be taking the market manager training, which I think will help me grow and learn more. And work more with the state of Michigan and add some more demonstrations and family-friendly events, maybe food trucks. And maybe work on revamping the Tuesday market somehow. And. Then, so last page is just thanking everyone, it's just some pictures. I'm in there and I learned a lot, like I said, and it was, I love Dexter and I love this market, so I'm really excited to be doing it again next year and I appreciate all your support.
Thank you for leading for us.
Yes, I don't know if you have any questions or. That was enough? That's too much or not?
Do we have any questions for Mary Ann?
You mentioned that you're averaging about eighteen vendors a week, what's the most that we could have? I know there's, sometimes it looks like there's two areas per vendor.
Yeah, some of the vendors have two spots, a lot of the produce vendors, so we could, there's thirty spots and then there's like the music. So really, we could have. One week, you could have more than that, some weeks we did have more, some weeks we got less. Yeah, it under the, that area, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
What would the charge for a week, your full season?
It's, a season was a hundred and fifty on Saturday and sixty on Tuesday, and if they want to just come once, it's fifteen on Saturday or ten on Tuesday.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are there any tools or resources that you would like that would make it even better next year?
That's a good question. I mean, our budget, I think it's three thousand, I don't know if we ever look at increasing that, but that, that helps with the advertising and events and things like that. But I do get a lot of tools through the. State of Michigan, I work a lot with them, this training is going to help a lot, so I'm going to be going with that, so I think that helps. Yeah.
But what, after you've done the training, come back to all the resources you're thinking?
Okay, yeah, I'm in the January. I can come back.
Yeah, so the, you know, Mary Ann has done a great job at Farmer's Park this year. So also that I've invited her to manage our community garden as well. Some of you may not know, but Holly Austin is going to be retiring from the community garden, the manager position. And Mary Ann has offered to take on that role as well.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you again for your leadership and for doing the work for us.
Yeah, thank you for letting me share.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, down to item B, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve these agendas presented.
Thank you, that's enough. Second, please. Second. A discussion on the agenda. Next.
I'd like to rule. I've moved to amend. The agenda's full, item K three off. I have a couple of questions and corrections for that resolution.
So that would move that over to new business, nine, does that make sense?
Yeah, if it gets a second in the vote.
Okay, so we'll make that item nine. Any other changes to the agenda? And please call the vote to approve the agenda, if there's one change.
Okay, Abra, yes. Yeah. Huber.
Yeah.
Schlock.
Yeah.
Summaferro.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Yes. Those who are curious, I think we have ten approved, are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Note that there's a bill reimbursing me for my community garden. It's based on both pay, I don't know if that's a conflict, if I know that, I know it's there. If we get paid the garden there? We get paid if we help the health of the gardens. Reimbursed portion of our entry.
Yeah, so it's, you know, eighty dollars to participate, if you clean up at the end, do your part, then you get twenty of that reimbursed. For up to twenty.
No further. We're down to item G, which is a public hearing this evening to amend our general code ordinances. We are planning to amend the general code, chapter eighteen, environment and sixty-two vegetation to. Essentially. Receive public comment regarding the following proposed amendments. We would amend chapter eighteen to delete the subsection B regarding growth of lawns, noxious weeds, or other harmful plants over eight inches in height. And then essentially amend section sixty-two, chapter sixty-two, to add a new article three to that section. For the purpose of regulation of growth of lawn, noxious weeds, and other harmful plants over eight inches in height. So explosions from one area can move to another. So I'd like to open the public hearing and see if there's anyone that wants to speak on that or has comments on those proposed changes. Great, we'll open the public hearing officially at seven nineteen. And welcome. Please state your name and address officially.
I am Todd Austin and with a three five number, Ryan Graff. Um. I, I don't have prepared comments, but I did notice that this was for a comment. And I thank Jimmy for jumping in the Facebook. That it would be on the agenda this evening. What I've read of the proposed changes to the ordinance. Looks very copy paste from the way things have been done for many decades. And I'm wondering if. It might be time to revisit these standards and expect expectations. In light of our changing world. As the climate becomes more challenging, as sources of water become harder to find. For our community and for others in general, the world in general. As we become more aware and more concerned about. You know, extensive use of lawn chemicals and over maintenance of yards and things like that. If it's, isn't time to reconsider what these standards look like and what we enforce where and why. Maintaining, dictating for our residents that they maintain. What feels very much to me like the opening credits of Beavis and Biebers. With the patented manicured lawns, you know, lawn grass is the largest area of land crop in the United States. And. It impresses me more and more as time passes that this is a silly waste of money. And that we should reconsider what we ask our citizens to do in that area. I haven't studied it, I don't know what other communities have done, I'm sure there are those who will be on these old style standards. And while I respect and appreciate these are people to. Maintain a certain standard, whatever that standard might be, and protect what they see as their property values that derive it by. It's incumbent upon us to think about these things. And think beyond just what's been done in the past and what others are doing now because they did it in the past. And how we can go forward in a more thoughtful way. Than simply repeating the same style that's come before.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks guys. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Let's see, none, none, it's Josh, I'll. Just ask, are there hands up online? Anyone online want to raise their hand and speak on this topic? I'm guessing that, but.
I see no raise hands.
Okay. Then we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-two. And. Council has an action item, consideration item, starting on after the public hearing if we want. If there's somebody that would like to make a motion. Then we can hear from the show. Well, junk at once. So this will be a short item. Is there no motion?
Zach, I move to adopt the amendments as presented with the following changes, and I'll go slowly here, folks, if you want to follow along. On page thirty-one. Section sixty-two fifty-eight. In line one, two, three. Strike or noxious harmful vegetation from that third line. And the reason why is I don't care if it's six inches and noxious, it ought to go, and we cover that later on in that sentence. The next change would be sixty-two fifty-B. I would change that to read instead, the provisions and requirements of this article. Or, excuse me, the height provisions and requirements of this article shall not apply to public parks. Properly maintained natural prairies or rain gardens is defined by Washtenaw County Water and Desources Commissioner or decorative grass species.
You don't see, are there two proposed changes, Zach?
Yes.
Okay, so in that section sixty-two fifty that you, how many page? It had six inches in there and everywhere else in there in here is eight. I believe that was intended to be consistent.
Yes. I missed this one.
All right, and the six to be eight and sixty-two fifty.
Thank you. So a few changes proposed by Zach in motion to remove. In the first part of the sentence, or noxious or harmful vegetation. From the first part, I'll leave you in the second part, and then adding the height provisions, the requirements are, which do not apply to public parks. What was the word used?
Properly maintained.
Properly maintained natural prairies and or rain gardens is defined by. Or natural grass.
Or decorative grass species.
Decorative grass species, okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay.
So you've had. The opportunity to look at this on and on through the summer, coming out of. Excuse me, what was an interesting month of May, with some communities in Washtenaw County adapting no more May. We did not, but. Grasses didn't get cut as they normally would, and we have a number of letters that went out. You'll recall. Almost everybody took care of their lawn, or called a lot of snow, they did have a service. A second round happened later in June. And out of that, only one person had to go farther with the, with the citation issue. But that has been rectified and they maintained the, the yard as appropriate afterwards, through the rest of the, the season. But moving, amending the ordinance will, and taking the portion for dealing with lawns and their maintenance out of the public nuisance section. Allows us to handle it with improper due diligence, but without the. The extra care that one has to when you're dealing with the other set of public nuisances. Accumulation of junk and broken equipment and et cetera. In order to, to be able to go into and, and handle that kind of situation, we have to have a court order. We don't have to have a court order to properly notify, that's what the public notice will do, and send a letter. We don't, we just, if it hasn't been taken care of, we can just go in, the city can, city's contractor can, go in and take care of it. We can't do that under the current, the waiting ordinances. So this will expedite it even without. Reducing the due diligence that's required. In all of your comments. I thought they got nothing last time, so thank you for the additional edits. I can answer any questions if you. The word. Were some comments from, or questions from Mr. Summaferro that you may want to discuss this evening? Specifically, the portion. In sixty-two fifty-five obtained by the city subdivision F, where it's either a hundred dollars to cover an administrative charge. Or twenty-five percent of the contractor's fee. The question of this could definitely consider the tax, it hasn't in other communities where they've done it this way. But I can't say definitively that those communities have been taking a point in it. So I don't know that it can withstand the challenge. But it is something we're discussing if there is a concern. Because if there is, then council could establish a set fee.
There's some careful with the tone. You don't have to, so it's a change to do it, we're going to change it. I don't, I don't have, we're going to change it. What we changed it to?
It would, it would be language to the effect of a hundred dollars or in an amount established by resolutions council. Based on, if you're going to, based on some criteria. The designation of hours, staff hours, or something more in those lines.
Yeah, I have no objection to it. It may be a little more fine tuned to do a resolution every year, but it also requires us to pay attention. The fact that it rises with contractor fees means as costs get higher. Self-adjust. Yeah, it'll self-adjust. This is very common in pretty much every ordinance you'll see related to nuisance abatement. That there is cost because the cost for staff, by the time you get to the point where you're mowing someone's yard is five to 10 hours minimum. And a hundred dollars disappears very quickly. So someone doesn't want to pay, take care of their lawn. The first couple of times you're sending notices, I would just want to have you give the opportunity to clarify that this would allow folks to use decorative and low water species.
Yes.
My wife cannot get rid of grass fast enough. Our front yard, we've changed the sidewalk in the house. There's no grass there now. Lots of flowers, some strawberries. This would not prohibit it. It would just say with these particular things, if you're going to go with a traditional grass, it's got to be shorter and not reverberant. Thank you.
Okay. Under sixty-two dash fifty-one. It says, but in any event, at least once a month, remove our cost, we cut this, we remove. Also treats grass vegetation growing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Reaching a height of eight inches or more, but in any event, at least once a month and more often than maybe necessary. My view of that is that regardless of, you can have a height of less than eight inches, but this ordinance is telling people they have to cut the lawn.
Yes, it's logical that if you don't have more of a rain, it's probably never grows fast. But even without rain, it's probably going to get to height of eight inches in one spring.
But it said, so it says, but in any event, at least once a month, which seems to say regardless of whether it's reached eight inches.
It could be interpreted that way, yes. You could strike that.
I guess I would strike, strike that. I think if the goal is to just regulate eight inches or more, I don't think we want to add something. I don't want to add something that is. You still cut your lawn once a month regardless of height. I don't know. Wow, I definitely agree with that. Someone who mows my lawn as infrequently as possible. I'm going to say that once a month is not always necessary because I don't take, I don't feed my grass. I don't water my grass. It doesn't always grow that fast.
So you're suggesting striking from, but in any event, at least once a month.
Right. I have a couple more. So clarify the question. So you know, right from the get-go, it says it shall be unlawful for any owner or possessor to do this. It shall be, and then section sixty-two five-one-A shall be the responsibility of the owner or possessor. Sixty-two five-one-B, where the property is occupied by a tenant, the tenant shall be responsible. I just wanted to make sure that we're consistent and it's clear what's happening if it is a rental property. And if there is some agreement between the tenant and the landlord, the actual owner of the property, who's responsible here because
it's still the property owner. The tenant gets the notice as well.
Right.
We have in the past and will continue in the future to send the notice to both if we know it's a rental. Excuse me, otherwise it just goes to whoever owns the property. Because in the end, regardless of what the tenant landlord situation is, the property owner is the property owner. They are the one responsible for it. The one that's.
So then do we, so sixty-two five-one-B, my reading at the beginning of that said the tenant shall be responsible and subject to the penalty provided for violation of this article. Which seems to come to.
I think if we could take. I think it's just making it, it's language, making it clear that if a landlord has sent it to his tenant, the tenant will be responsible as with that second sentence as well as the property owner. But if you're not comfortable with that, because A already says everything you wanted to say, you could just take the.
Um, for that particular paragraph, if you change the second, so if it is where the property is occupied, tenant, we change the tenant to the owner shall be responsible and subject to the violation. And then take out however, the shall or leave the owner responsible and just start from on value to maintain the property as required. Assuming we do such work as required.
I'm sorry, did you say that again? You said that instead of the second tenant in that first sentence, change that to property owner.
Right. And then everything from however to the and or, so just make the last sentence of on value to the property as required.
Okay, got it.
I apologize if I should have said that sooner.
No, that's fine. If I'm going to say anything, then I can kick down as well.
Uh, in the actual, where the notice, where it says the notice will be as follows.
Are we?
I mean, I guess it's in two spots. I'm looking at twenty-seven.
Okay.
Fourth line up from the bottom. To the right, it says at least, at least, at least.
Oh, I can take.
So strike from one of those, at least. And then. Okay, so sixty-two dash five-five F, which were needed on bottom page thirty-three. Being.
Where's my? Sorry.
No. Yes, the enforcement officer is authorized to include incentive cost and administrative charge of one hundred or twenty-five percent of the contractor's fee. So I think we need to add dollars there. Otherwise that looks like percentage by five. Attached to one hundred.
Yep, got it.
Writing that in words. Five. Just up from that sixty-two five-four B, failure by the owner and or occupant if you just want to. Slash between and or.
Okay, so Zach and Jamie. Okay. We're going with this problematic procedure law. I'm comfortable with, they can all be right back. I'm going to amend the motion to accept all changes.
Ben, mention that some ground. Accept all changes, most. Can you pass it on?
Someone read back all of the changes so we can have them clear.
I can try. Did you read back yours?
No, those are part of the agenda.
Okay. So I think in section sixty-two fifty-one. On page, on page thirty-one, top page there too. Section sixty-two fifty-one B, where the property is occupied by a tenant. The second tenant will be changed to your owner. Will be responsible to mentally provide violation of this article. And then take out the word however. And then from however to relieve, so it just says the owner is responsible. The city may use a jury.
Strike over down to a part.
Okay, starting with failure. Okay, so you are striking however all the way to the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay. Jamie, where was the? Where was the slash that you added?
Uh, sixty-two five-four B. That would be.
Okay, it's in between and or, right? The three one?
Yes.
Okay, and then section F, I have adding the word dollars after one hundred. On sixty-two dash fifty-five. What I recorded.
And then we'll strike in one of the at least from page thirty-two.
Thank you.
And then thirty-two, sorry, go ahead, Jamie. And then getting rid of the. It's on top of page thirty-two.
Does that help, Zach?
Yep, it's been important because there's a lot of stuff we went there.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Pam, who's going to vote to approve those amendments to the original?
Cover, yes, Michelle's.
Yes.
Prowl, yes. Summer Pharaoh.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yeah.
Rippon, yeah, Kyo.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so we have a new, new original motion. Are there any further discussions? Okay, Pam, who's going to vote on the original motion?
As amended, as amended.
Rippon, yes, Summer Pharaoh.
Yes.
Cover, yes, Prowl, yes, Michelle.
Yes. Yeah.
Kyo.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. And I'll get your work on that.
This will get published in the paper next Wednesday.
Okay.
And then seven days after that, it will be.
Great.
Thank you.
Should be ready for spring.
Yeah.
Okay, we're down to item eight, nonarranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? On any topic on our office in general? Seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to say in the comments? Under not arranged. Seeing no hands. We are down to item I, which is our communications on page, which are upcoming meeting list, under communications on page thirty-five. Any comments by council members or staff who are in the meeting calendar?
I'm not sure if it's technically as needed, but cap dart will be meeting coming up here. And we're going to have some folks from Spark talk to us. So a little bit more on that from what we normally get here in five to 10 minutes.
That's at the next meeting?
Yep, at the basement of Chelsea City Hall.
Okay, we're down to our first report this evening. Welcome, Tim, our Public Services Superintendent. How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good.
Only got two weeks in front of it. Take some questions if anybody has anything.
Question down to your work.
I mean, I have, I have a question.
All right, no, that's fine.
I, I mean, what if a scum beach and should I visit it?
You can come take a tour at a time. So scum beaches on our clarifiers. And it basically takes stuff that goes on top of the clarifiers, which is all the one big spot and gets bumped out. It's not the biggest, it's just part of the clarifier.
So I can't like.
It's not a beach by any, it's nothing you're going to want to go to like that.
I mean, I didn't think so, but I have to ask.
But like I said, you're willing, anybody's.
I asked this last week, but I got another call from someone, the sign from the farmer's market. The big sign in the middle does say May to October, but the individual ones out on the post say don't park here, do not. I'm going to pose again, the idea of how we can get folks aware of that.
Which one did we tell them?
The individual ones. Those don't have the May to October, just a big one.
So they don't have the date on them.
Right. I hate to have to. I'm both and we both, probably something more, you guys can figure out, but I have been asked multiple times.
That's fine. I'll talk to Kirby that tomorrow and see if you can come up with something.
Yeah. Assuming that we're going to have that, what will probably happen is we'll probably replace all the signs. Consolidating because I think there's like two currently, two signs on each post. And so adding another one can be a little hodgepodge, so. We can, we can get that.
Do we have a lot of financial items on our new committee third street?
Uh, no, it was right now, we're waiting on the wall. We got some things we had to take care of there. I talked to Adrian today. She said that they've been contacted with law company. They're now, I mean, means of how they're going to get here, what they got to do. So when that's going to take place, I'm not sure. It wasn't really a date. Because they were busy doing other stuff, obviously.
Remind me what's on the wall.
Here's just a couple of things, minor things, but more aesthetics than anything. A couple of spots don't, well, actually should be done. Add a couple of things, a couple of rules on the ends, make it look better. A lot of aesthetics with most of it. So I do a couple of things. We have these for the Ryan Bradwell House have been ordered up there in, just a matter of being US to come out there and take care of that. If you guys, everything's approved tonight through Kissinger, I'm going to go ahead with Raymer pump to take care of cleaning one of our walls, five of high school and also having, we're doing work done on our high service pumps every year maintenance, basically. I talked to Kurt today. They were in the process of taking, getting the Christmas decorations and get ready to start. And last but not least, we had the new hire search today. We're getting there.
What was that person's name?
Will.
Aaronson. I, I, I just featured him in the last packet, but yeah. So Will Aaronson, he spent at least a summer with Ann Arbor Parks and Rec. He's been working for, I think, for the last couple of years, so.
All right. Good, that should be worth. On that, that's our committee note manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine. You're host council.
Good.
Excellent. John had a really good Thanksgiving. Wow, that was exciting. I enjoyed my Thanksgiving with my granddaughters and my daughter and son-in-law in New York. It was very nice. Okay, before I go into updates, which I don't have any verbal updates for you today, I mean, what I just said. There are two general updates, the Broad Street Committee update and then the Second Street Sub area land proposal. Do you have any questions for me on these? The two that I have.
Yes. Uh, so regarding thirty forty-five Broad Street, I was just looking at, thank you for including this timeline, the background supplement. What efforts have any, have they, and do they anticipate taking to engage with the resident on Higgy Jeffords or otherwise in the driving vicinity of that development?
They have not articulated with this point. We know that they won't be going through the same public engagement. Process that Norfolk did. But developers aren't always asked or encouraged, I should say, to, to talk with the people who are around the end. We can refer to that for both of them. And so make sure that they are talking. But we don't have any specific process they did.
I'm sure as I received inquiries about the status of the development, and at least according to this timeline. You know, you just see a few of the public hearing.
Don't. Right, that's their proposal, and I have to have conversation with them because it needs a lot of time.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I don't know what's standard or typical, but I would just know if I was resident nearby and you're kind of walking this play out and you're thinking, okay, there's gonna be some time for me. To write input and maybe it's supposed to be these types of meetings, but if there's any way that they could set up some informal meeting group. You know, it doesn't have to be sponsored by the city. I wouldn't necessarily want it to be like.
So Jamie, I think, I think. You know, most proposed development. That would occur on a property would have. The opportunity for residents to come and be with the company for the planning. This is a little different because the city slash PDA owns the properties. And there's still a due diligence period reflecting whether to even proceed with what's proposed. You know, any, any resident that has a question can certainly ask it at any. All of the meetings. I guess the, you know, this, this. This timeline has a lot of steps to it. And then each one of these. When it goes A through L, you know, a lot of these are long. There are certain. Things that the developer is potentially gonna ask the city to help them apply for. And after a couple of meetings with them, I don't even understand what they all are. So the next step is trying to get clarification on those things because. I think this council needs to understand what it would be that we would be asked to do on the city's behalf to help bring this forward if. If they go after, you know, financing or grants or loans or whatever, the different parts of the state. I don't know what those. You have, you can make. You know. So I guess I would. This isn't a done deal. And this development is proceeding kind of. For both a period where they're trying to figure out whether they can afford it. And I think from our, from my perspective, at least sitting on the thirty-fourth Broad Committee, I'd like to understand what is it that either the city and or the PDA. Need to commit to. To help either make it happen or allow it to proceed. One example of that is, you know, we know that that property has some contaminated soil. And we can use the Tiff dollars to help pay back environmental cleanup process of property. That I understand because we've done that on brand. We've been through that before. Is the city as we do that before. But there's some other things that they're asking to do that I don't know that we've done before.
Right.
And Michelle might have a better grasp on them than. All this, I know better than I do, but I'm trying to understand what those things are and describe those here. I would say if there's any residents that have concerns about where we are, I would encourage you to just tell them that we're, we're in a due diligence. Period, if you will. That's what this predevelopment period of period is for six months. Or whatever number of months it has to be. But I don't, I don't think there's any specific step to say to. People next door, you know, hey, is this what you want next door? Any more than. Is allowed in any other, you know, development that would be proposed by somebody.
If, if, if there are things that. You are hearing from residents, there are interns or the questions. I'm happy to answer them. I can let them know when we're having thirty-four-five Broad Street meetings because they are, they're. But like John said, at this point. We're doing this little dance through this predevelopment group, and then. We, we're going to be asked to participate in some way. And we need to understand what those numbers are. The developer needs to have a certain amount of. Comfort that what they're proposing right now. Is, is acceptable. The thirty-four-five Broad Street Committee is not a, is not an approval body. It's a recommending body, but it's not a recommended body in the same vein as the planning commission. So one of the things that the developer were guiding them per our process is they need to have a little more. Comfort with what they're proposing, they can do a pre-application meeting, which is certainly not three members of council. Two to three members of planning commission, staff, consultants, DPW, fire department. And, and we look at the development from the standpoint of all of the regulations, sound planning, sound zone. Excuse me. And then give that feedback to the developer and they. From that point, know, you know, are there tweaks that they're going to have to do? Are there changes that they have to be made? Before they actually move forward with coming in for a formal application. In order to come in front of the planning commission. But we have not baked in a. Public engagement process in a pre-application meeting. Because your decisions. Will be made. As far as whether there's approval or not, or what's me.
I think. Generally. You know, for residents being aware of what's happening. And so whatever the best way of making sure that happened is. Not necessarily clearly. What I think is difficult is when, you know, we get to a public hearing and say, well, you know, it's not a done deal, it's not a done deal. A lot of time and energy and money has been spent to get it to the point where it's ready for a public hearing, where it really does feel like a done deal. And so maybe a resident isn't. You know, totally following anything. Oh, I have this opportunity at this public hearing, but to me, it feels very difficult, even on something like our lawn. And meet ordinance where we have somebody who gave them proposed a very interesting alternative things to consider. It just, it feels like. The timing, and I understand it's, we need to keep moving things forward and residents need to try to stay apprised of things, so. I just, I think it, it's better for everyone if everybody's kind of on the same page earlier than just the public here. All of that, yeah.
I get what you're saying. There's one, there's. So the thing that we have to remember and the thing that we have to educate the public on is that it's one thing just for them to speak. Or provide their input as far as when they're. If, if, they're lucky to give their, their opinion. But if your opinion is not grounded in what's required by the rules, just because somebody doesn't like a development. You can't not let something go forward because somebody doesn't like it. If there has to be a valid reason for it. So. If, if.
Yeah, but this, this is a little bit different though.
I'm sorry, did it happen on Second Street? I mean, it seems like there were, you know, there was recommendations from planning commission to improve. Storage facilities. And residents came because they didn't like that.
You're right, planning commission.
So that's always the case. I mean, there are times that we are responsive to when others don't like something.
And so. We need to step back again. Counsel heard what. The residents said, but when they made their. Their determination, it wasn't just based on the fact that the residents didn't like it. There were some issues that. With the ordinance that they didn't feel reapplicating had. Addressed to council satisfaction. Planning commission, city council, you do have that. Council. And. Should that. In the case of using the second street, deny it just because, or using the motion, we deny it because. The residents don't want. Yeah. Don't get you, that, that would you. As an applicant, then come back and say.
Well, in this, in this case, because the city slash PDA owns the property, depending on. How the transaction takes place, there's a land value that has to be determined and. You know, we'll look and discuss by the PDA in terms of whether they're accepting, whatever that is.
Right.
Assuming it's just the PDA property that's debated. Yes, that's a difference, that's an extra step. I mean, it's. That needs to be put out there first. If that can't be agreed upon, then. The developer doesn't, they don't even go to site line, they don't even get to the next. Step, but the developers can't. Really go there until they understand their own performance. So it's kind of a.
So I think.
Circular process for a while.
One of the things we could do is something, not identical to what we did with the, with the housing task force or the zoning ordinance update subcommittee. I could put something on the PDA's webpage. Keeping people abreast of what's going on, like we did when Norfolk was going through the public engagements. So that would, that would be one way. We can advertise that in the newsletters. It can be discussed in staff reports. You as ambassadors to the community can also let the residents know.
Yeah, I was just, I just pulled up our website because we have the undercurrent city property thirty-four-five Broad, but that information is predated. So I was going to suggest perhaps. Upsetting that, and to give that updated. Given its city, I'm given its location. I think there's more interest in it than just to the whole. They can parcel.
I think that's good.
So I would think of that.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Okay. Keep going.
Uh, the downpour air quality, I received a note from a resident who works for Eagle and shared some information about air quality violations that that film. So she had the information with Johnson and Michelle, and I just hear some here updated, or if there's any reason to bring that information to the council or for something that he was.
Yeah, so we didn't actually have to have a chance to touch base. I was only in the office two days last week and then Michelle was out and I was, yeah, it's been a chance to go back and forth, but. As far as, as the air quality regulations enforced by Eagle, I don't know that we really have a lot of. Tools in our ordinance to be able to. You know, put, put that one hook and say, you know. If, if, if you don't comply, the city is gonna come after you. That really is more in Eagle's realm to, to enforce. That, that, that's, that's, that's my initial reaction.
Right. There are at a particular level, but I think the gentleman that you've got the information had some suggestions that, and we, like Justin said, we just haven't had a chance to go over. But we went over them and tried to have. Some update in our, in the next.
What did that, Kurt?
Uh, I was contacted on November sixteen. I shared the information on the.
And I didn't think to, we had.
No, it's like any version. Interested in what.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we are on to page three of our agenda. There's a written county sheriff's report. Any comments or questions on sheriff's report?
I didn't reach out to Lieutenant Hines and ask if he could be making something available for the first meeting in January.
Okay. I hope Zach, so you're here, right? Yeah, I'm not sure if this may filter back yet in your conversations with, with them, then, but it's my understanding that because of issues. At the seventy-six-hundred block with Dan Holly, the Sheriff Department was going to get a. I forgot what it's called, blankets, no trespass of folks who don't live there can't be there. Do you know if they've done that or said for this test?
I, I had, I.
Okay. The questions on the sheriff's report. I just had a couple of comments, the, the, send in those questions and thank you for passing those on to the sheriff. I actually talked to the sheriff a long time ago, ten, twelve plus years ago, about similar type of items. Now, if your responses are any different, and I don't think they're any better now than they were ten or twelve years ago. I agree with what they're saying. I think. In reading through this, through the report, I was rather struck that it seemed very. I thought it was inappropriate. I thought the report should be fact-based and shouldn't include editorials or. Subjective terms that were used in the report. I also think that the traffic stops. Actually, what, what, what was written supplemental report is exactly the opposite of what I was told in the past, that the traffic stops are in fact so that the people that get stopped can't be checked. To see if they have outstanding warrants or if there's other issues. We live in a pretty affluent community, so people for the most part in our community drive pretty nice cars. Generally are pretty well off, and I think that by stopping people for things that are. Like broken taillights or headlights that's out, tends to be people that may be of less means and maybe not of our community. And I don't think that's how police resources should be used. We get a lot of complaints from council, always have. We get a lot of complaints about speeding in and around our neighborhoods and our streets. And the answer we always get is the sheriff says we don't have time to go and monitor speeding on all different streets. Yet somehow we have time for one hundred and fifty traffic stops every month for, or not. Or that don't even get citations, less than ten percent of those guys get, get citations. So I think it would be a lot more helpful if we had the sheriff redirect their efforts. In doing random traffic stops to doing speeding enforcement, because that's the feedback we're getting from our residents. That's what they're asking for. I have yet to have a resident stop me and say, you know, I'm sick and tired of people with one headlight out driving down the street. Nobody's ever said that to me. I've had a number of people say they were mad because people were speeding, especially through subdivision and residential streets. So. I would like to have more discussions. Looking forward to the sheriff visiting in January. I'm hoping they can get to a more objective and less subjective. Recording. One other thing that the, that the lieutenant pointed out in reply, he said, in doing the traffic stops, that it's been proven. That by doing traffic stops, people see the police there, and they, that causes them to behave better when they're driving. The same exact thing goes for when people see the police cars. The same exact thing goes for when people see the police cars in certain neighborhoods or certain developments. It doesn't help for every time somebody drives by a particular neighborhood that they see a police car there because that police car is there trying to establish relationships or doing whatever they're doing voluntarily instead of based on responses. This obviously, the one report that was in there was based on a particular, but in talking to the people over at 7600 Dan Hoy, the police are going there more often than they go other places on purpose, looking intent. Didn't know the people there under the guise of you need to establish relationship, but what happens is is that people are driving back and forth and seeing a police car all the time and saying to themselves, it's like, exactly like they do when they see somebody pulled over. Why is it that there's a police car there? And they don't assume that it's because they're building the community. So.
So, so I do believe the other 56 stops in the month do include speaking enforcement.
Thanks. I agree with most of what Joe just said. I mean, it's, it's not that, you know, we shouldn't know if there are things going on that are, you know, unsafe in our community, but I looked, it says right here, month of 2021, there was one assault in crime, right? And okay, this one says two and possibly they're related. I pulled up the sheriff's report from 2021 at this time. Didn't say anything, I don't know. Wasn't even on there. So I just want to make sure we're being, you know, aware of what's being reported and it's not necessarily just the facts. I mean, there, there is, there could be some bias there and I think our police do a great job. I'm not, you know, I'm not this is new, this is we're all adjusting to a new development in town, but I just think it needs to be handled maybe a bit more delicately.
Yeah, and kind of along the same notes, I appreciated the question that was about the reporting and identifiers and one thing in the response from Lieutenant Hunt was very interesting that the, I'm, I'm reading their, his response that those internal reports should always contain specific descriptors. This is not an internal report. What is submitted to us is basically public and put out for everybody to see. So if they are, you know, the, this is basically what it says, that these were the summaries from internal reports and those internal reports should contain descriptive information, which I agree, they're internally within the police department, they should have all the information they need. But I think they should pay more attention to what they put as a report out when they send it to us when it goes into a packet that goes to the public.
So I don't know if anybody has ever reviewed, speaking of these internal reports, I mean, the police incident report for each call of service, that is public record and it is something you can review and it is something I've done for a number of developments and a number of different reasons. So to me, these descriptions are very consistent with what is written in these incident reports, which are public record. I'll be curious to hear from the sheriff, but my guess is for efficiency, say, these excerpts are taken almost directly. I mean, those reports are written like a narrative to recap what happened. So I'll be curious to know if that's my read of it. If in fact my read is correct. But if you haven't ever gone through incident reports, I would predict that it's very.
Thank you, Zach.
Well, I would just say that if we want, if we want to get our headspace in the area where we want to direct the constabulary to do things that we want, we're going to have to buy our own police department. The sheriff department does what they're going to do. It's a separate entity, separate elected official who can ask, but they're going to do what they're going to do. And not opposed to it, just more opposed to being that mindset.
I think that's a little black and white. I mean, they're going to do what they're going to do in spite that we don't have, they, they won't listen to us and they won't cure our concerns. And I don't think that's accurate. And that's, that's all I have to say about it.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty big. That's a there, there is no reason why you cannot talk to people that are working in our community, explain to them, express to them the concerns that the citizens know we have regularly. And if you don't get a response, they have superiors who they report to, then we then talk to and up to and including sheriff, right? And you're right, at that point, if we don't get any satisfaction, then we should reevaluate and see where we are. But that would be, because the problem that you run into, not only is it a cost issue, there's also a big responsibility that comes with that in their police department. You take on all that, why that potentially those police officers are creating that we're talking about here, that could be something that could be a legal liability that would become the city's liability. Paying for that right now and not taking on that risk. That's important to station. When we went through and did the study about the city doing their own police station, that was one of the largest issues. It wasn't just cost.
Dustin, you have an opportunity between now, January to talk.
I sure can.
So who they prepare for and. Thank you everyone for your comments on that. Any other comments on sheriff's report? Okay, that's when we're down to city manager report.
Or so, um, you, we have a supplement table. There, there were a few supplements to existing items, including I, in the packet, I had included information from the August packet regarding public safety facilities. I missed the items that were provided by partisan architecture leave at the end of September. Those are included in your, your supplement along with more information about item uh, M8, I believe it is, the request to waive the national policy. There is a letter from Sarah Bobrowski, who is also online tonight along with, with policy itself. As far as what is included in my written report, the UNL is offering, does it get offering, I don't know, newly elected officials training. Even though it, it does say in their newly elected officials, I think anybody who wants to attend is, is welcome to do so. If you're interested, just let me know and I'll get you registered. We're still working with the attorney from Warma to get him out to do a presentation the RFP project that they're working on to give a little bit of context and information for us as we, as we potentially could discuss that. We, we, as, as we're, we're working towards prepping this building for move. The chamber, Chuck will be on behalf of the chamber, reach out and need to ask if we could talk about the chamber and sometimes moving into what will be our old space at DNC Bank. I told them I'd reach out to the DNC Bank representatives and include it as a, as an information item to council that, that they have made that request. Does anybody have any, any questions for me? I'm, I'm reporter, anything else?
It's like you, it's getting easy today. Only 31 pages in the document.
Yeah. Well, this is some of the pictures.
Yeah, no, that's true. That's true. I'll move down to my report. I don't have much to add. To the written report, I was contacted by, I was contacted by Dave Watten just before Thanksgiving and he and Tom Covert, representing Midwestern Consulting have some additional information that they'd like to share and he's requested a meeting. Keeping with my prior practice, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that request. You know, I don't, I don't know where this development in general falls on the list of priorities for the council or what his thoughts are. I, like I said in the past, I typically will talk to just about anyone and hear what they have to say. He's asked Michelle and Justin to be a part of that meeting and I'm searching for a time lead to the 12th to set that meeting up, but I wanted to make all of you aware of it. Does anybody have any concerns with your meeting at them? I'll bring back whatever he shares, you know, to the council in the past and I'm going to let Sion know when he's requested a meeting also, which I haven't done yet. I tend to do that yet. But obviously his area of interest is to continue trying to do something there. He reached out, so I never knew that. Thanks for, I didn't get that in my floor, so.
Do you know why he hasn't also asked Sion? Or you don't know that he asked?
I don't know. He just said he has additional information that his engineers have come up with, Sheriff.
So he may have that.
I don't know if it's related to the size of it, the groundwater, the, you know. As with all the councils, I have items down on the new business for a resolution to amend organizational matters and then council rules. Just as we get to those, you know, I only want to act on those if everybody's ready at this point. If you want to talk about it today and have a Monday December meeting, that's okay. I just don't want to go too far out with adopting either one of those. I'd like to get those in place. Towards that end, usually when we get through the holiday season in December, we start our goal setting session as we prepare for budget season. And I guess I'd like to know, or get you thinking about, do you want to start those goal setting meetings in January? Given that we're, we're all due to each other, there's two council members. Or do you want to wait until February, which is historically been the most common month that we start? I'm happy to do it in January. I just wanted to kind of get a feel for what you're thinking. I think it's always helpful to talk and get to know each other a little bit, especially considering we have new members. Yeah.
I'm kind of waiting for people who recently joined to have been here before in some capacity, so.
Then I would, then what I'll be doing is reaching out, you know, to try and schedule something in February and then another one in March. That sounds good, everybody. Okay, that's all I have to add in my report. Any other questions for me? Dustin, nice job getting this room together. I'm with that talent. It looks great. The lighting is much, much better than it was. I think before. How's the sound? Can you hear us okay?
No, no.
Okay, so. We'll have to talk about that. Speak louder, maybe.
Especially when they're voting. Without your upstairs back to us, you don't hear a thing when it's being said. I can't hear.
Okay, well, it's all right. Ask and find out. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep, Todd?
The acoustics in the room are highly problematic. I don't think speaking up is going to solve it. I suspect your company bought sound reinforcement, so microphones for folks, they are broadcasters of mine. We can talk about that online, but the acoustics in this space are deeply problematic. They're a real struggle to hear many of the conversations that go on quietly up in the room.
Okay, well, that's all I'm asking. Okay, appreciate the feedback. Appreciate the feedback. Okay, there were no formal council member reports in the packet. Does anybody have an in report under that section? Okay, I'm seeing none of it. We'll move down to consent agenda. Items K1 and 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Remember that we moved K3 to new business. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will move if we approve the now six items on the consent agenda. Consideration of bills and payroll in the amount of $269,347.75. Consideration of approval of the Washington Regional Resource Management Authority fiscal year 2023 budget. Provo from Rayburg to perform preventive maintenance on high service pump and well for an amount now to exceed $30,000. Dexter Day's park use permit request for the holiday light parade on December 10th, 2022. Resolution for the recommendation of erratic hail, social district permit request, MLCC and fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendments. Thanks for that.
Motion by Ross, second by Sanam. Thank you both. Ms. Campbell, you're ready? Please call the vote to approve the six items on the consent agenda.
Five, seven, zero.
Yes.
Shla.
Yes.
Griffin. Yes. Aura. Yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Cover. Yes. Caleb.
Yes. Motion carries. We are now on to page four of the agenda, unfinished business, item L1. Consideration of continuing the Dexter Downtown Social District. Lot B, 93, the back. There is a suggested motion. Does anyone want to make the suggested motion or conversion of that to get a study?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'm patient for the packet. Motion to adopt the resolution to allow year-round operation of the downtown social districts in accordance with the revised management and maintenance plan dated November 21st, 2022.
Motion by Ross, second by Sanam. Thank you both. Okay.
Okay, at our, at your last meeting, you had some questions for me and some clarifying language that you wanted me to put into the management plan that has been done. It also was taken to, to the DDA as, as explained and the DDA, the DDA did I'm sorry, the DDA, no, tripping my words. The DDA did vote unanimously to authorize the purchase of six decorative trash cans and 44 permanent signs. That way they're front and back in an amount not to exceed 18,000. But they only did it, the caveat was in the event city council approves the year-round operation of the district. It, it's a way of encouraging you and the reason that they did that is there were business owners that spoke. They also had to be members of the board, but they explained that we're going to have this type of district, having this intermittent winter season district. People don't know enough about it. We don't there's, there's not enough, we don't do any marketing or no promotion about it. It's really left to just the businesses. Excuse me. It does have the potential to add vibrancy to the downtown if it's, you know, run year round. And the businesses prefer to participate more if it is a year-round operation. And so the DDA, that, that's the way of encouraging you, hoping that you will also support the, the year-round operation. We do have a caveat from, from the DPW. And while the DDA did authorize the additional trash cans and the signage upon our follow-up with DPW, they don't have, they have not experienced any significant trash issues related to the social district. And you could say, well, that's because it hasn't been utilized a lot, but those who are utilizing it. And you could say, well, that's because it hasn't been utilized a lot, but those who are utilizing it, they're being responsible, and that's, that's wonderful. But currently with the staff shortages, DPW is asking council and DDA to forego the placement of the trash receptacles, the additional ones, for which they'd be responsible for checking and emptying. When the lack of receptacles is not currently streaming anything right now, so. We're bringing that to your, to you to discuss and hopefully support. We have done the more decorative signs, DDA did ask that welcome to be put up in front of one, and thank you for visiting, be put on this, on the backside. Any questions?
Yeah, I actually have a comment about the signs. So if the welcome to is at front of you when you get to the district, reading no alcoholic beverage beyond this point is limited. So, but then welcome is when you're leaving?
No, so the best way I can say it is, think of you walking from the police station, or the fire department, toward Alpine, and you hit the, you cross Alpine, and you're right there at River View. The sign you're seeing says, welcome to the district. But if you're going toward the fire station before you've crossed, the sign you see is, thank you for visiting.
Yes, so, but when you say welcome to, it says no alcoholic beverage beyond this point.
I see the point you're saying.
So maybe something up.
So we need to take that part off.
Or no alcoholic beverages outside this district.
Yes.
If you can see the side of the sign, you shouldn't be here.
We'll come up with some language, but you're right, sorry, I didn't touch that the first time.
Dan, are the water barrels coming down through the barricades of the water?
Yes.
Yes. Don't they usually come down in November?
November, by November thirtieth.
By November, that's not part of this.
What happens in the event that this gets more popular in the summer and there is a need for additional trash cans? Because I totally don't want to overburden the DDA if there's not, or the DPW, if there's not a need for it.
We have a plan for that. Okay, so one of the things that Justin and I have talked, I'll be going back to the DDA is, the DDA may need to hire seasonal help, that, currently the city hires seasonal help, the DDA may need to hire seasonal help specifically just for the downtown, to help support. Help support the DPW.
So can I ask one follow-up to that? So if we approve the motion that I put forward, we would be buying these trash cans?
No, DDA.
I'm sorry, the DDA will be buying these trash cans?
I'll go back to the DDA with the same request. What you're doing is you're asking for the year-round operation. You're not, you're not, you're not approving trash cans.
What's the revised, what, I'm sorry, what am I missing?
The revised management and maintenance plan?
Is the stuff above?
That's, no, that's this.
That's page one hundred and two.
Oh my gosh, the stuff after.
What?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay, never mind. All right, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't.
No, you're not, you're not.
If we have, if the DDA buys these and they end up in storage, that they're not going to be met. You know? But then we need them later, so if there's a plan for it, that's all I needed to hear.
That's a fair call.
Okay, so right now we have a motion by Ross, second by Semafaro. We read the motion on the bottom, page ninety-four, to adopt a resolution to allow year-round operation of the Dexter, of the downtown social district in accordance with the revised management and maintenance plan dated November twenty-second. Dan?
Comments about some of the verb tenses used, so I'm beginning on page ninety-seven, that's the clean version for the version with all the track lines except the track. Yes, so I can go off of that. So the management plan reads, the Dexter Social District would be managed by the city of Dexter, seems to me we should say will be managed. So we have wood in all legitimate places. So the first line, the Dexter Social District will be instead of would be. Second line, the district management operations would be assisted, should be, and will be assisted. If you go to the bottom of page ninety-seven, and the second to last line, streets in the social district would remain open, I think, will remain open. Go to the top of page ninety-eight, one, two, three, fourth line, once permitted licenses, I don't know if that should be a shall or a will.
I'm sorry, which one?
For once permitted, so the one, two, three, fourth line down in the.
Under which?
And first, in the first paragraph, permitted, involved by licenses, once permitted licenses will be allowed.
Licensees.
Licensees.
Would be allowed to sell and disperse.
Will be allowed? That should be willing, huh?
So you want all woods to be changed to will?
Uh, it seems most of them, so the, yeah, insurance and liability, that first sign. The cities, they've confirmed that the city will be covered by insurance, then extended to the city will insurance, insurance management, under operations. For the Dexter Social District is intended to be operational seven days a week. I mean, is that what we are doing, if that is what we are doing, then we should say will be operational seven days a week.
I think a lot of, the, the verbiage was to allow for some flexibility. So that unless you're making a major change, and you're going to be making major changes in this one, you're not having to, to go back to MLCC each time it's said, so.
But it just seems like the whole front of this begin is with woods, and then you gradually switch to like is and shalls, and. I mean, I think most of my comments end at that point, so in the, under operation, yeah, so I mean that, if you want to leave that flexibility and just say it's intended to, and then you guys can make a determination, that's fine. The social district beverages would not be able to be possessed nor consumed, I think that should be a stronger verb. After hours consumption of alcoholic beverages would have to be contained, since they should say will. Because then, you know, for example, in the next paragraph, the Dexter Social District shall be operated in coordination with, so then we switch to shall.
Right.
So, yeah, I think those are.
With the council. Appreciate those. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the resolution to allow social district to operate for a year, or year round.
Shells?
Yes.
Shla?
Yes.
Alra?
Yes.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes. Motion carries. Shells, they're working on that. Down to new business, item number one is discussion slash consideration of our resolution to amend organizational matters. Starting on page one oh four of the packet, there's a draft resolution with some highlighted, you know, people who are known on council. I typically view the, or six committees that meet monthly, Fire Board, Chamber of Commerce, Arts Commission, Planning Commission, the Zone Board of Appeals as needed, and then Arts Council or Arts Culture and Heritage. Those are our, what I would consider to be our primary city-initiated commissions, if you will. And then there's obviously six of you, six council members, and I don't know, in the past, we've always tried to get one on each committee, subject to, you know, what everybody wants to do. I did try to reach out to each of you about your interests, or to see where your interests lie. Joe shared that he's willing to jump in wherever is needed. Dan expressed some interest in the Chamber of Commerce, right? Zach, you, you responded back, we just kept our, but I'm still here on Fire Board, I'll be on there. I don't know if we want to try and go through here, these and get volunteers for various committees, or discuss whether some of these committees are even needed. You know, for example, the website committee hasn't met forever, I don't even know how vital it is to have that committee. We can have, we can, we can name another person and leave it there, or we could take it off and figure it out if we ever need to have a committee too.
Seemed essential, nineteen ninety-eight, probably. Have staff manage it.
Well, we updated the committees more recently, the website more recently than that, but. Yeah, I'm all for, for talking through this. When I spoke to Joe, I asked if he would be willing to be pro tem. He's got a lot of experience with this council in the past, and he was willing to have his name be there if everybody else was okay with that. I don't even know, does the five H committee still meet?
I believe they do.
They do, okay, then we should recommend somebody. So I, you know, from, from my perspective, if everybody's okay with, I would put Joe as pro tem, we changed that from Dan, if we amended to a meeting last, end of, last council cycle. Maybe about a third volunteer on the thirty, forty-five broad committee, if somebody would like to replace Dan there.
What time are those meetings difficult?
Oh, they vary.
Great, then you go right ahead, because that does not really work for my boss.
Okay, how about the five H committee, Justin, when does that one need?
If we might include a.
I know you have that list, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I, I want to say it's in the mornings. A weekday.
And could that be a staff member?
It could.
Did Joshua want to represent us on that one? Unless there's somebody that, not knowing what time it is, it might make it hard for someone else to commit to that. Is that your comment, everybody? Maybe, could you check on that one?
Yeah.
Dash for now, or is that fair, or not?
Well, my, my, my other thought is, with the.
I don't remember getting the report back on this one.
Yeah, yeah. With us no longer inactive litigation, the, the law of the center. My thought is, is that could also be very, as a, kind of, interacting with them at, through the farmer's market.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
But I don't want to talk to her first.
So, could we say, for now, staff?
Yeah.
Okay. So now, are you still okay on our NCH?
Yeah.
So undo that, okay, so, Zach, you expressed an interest in where you kept ours still? Okay, when Sanam is the alternate, I guess, I'll have that.
Sure.
I'm not trying to shake anything up more than necessary, correctly, if it works, it works, or somebody wants to do something different. Dan, I put you in as the primary for Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be happy to be the alternate, since I've done the last four or five meetings there. DAFD would say, Zach and I?
I, I think it'd be worthwhile trying to find a citizen to be one of the representatives, as opposed to just all elected officials. Bad official got that extra sign.
Where on Fire Board?
You can, Mr. Tull, I think you'd be fantastic. Actually, used to have someone who was a citizen, Jim Adams was on board for quite a while, and due to the budget impact and the importance of the position, at that time, it's decided that be two people from the council. So that was the rationale for change, and Ray Tull would be an excellent person, just to go with people as well.
If I haven't talked to Ray about it or thought about it, different person, Zach, you not want to be on there?
I, I prefer we open it up to get extra different perspectives to participate in it.
In addition to?
And, and instead of one of the current officials.
Well, I'd like to participate on that board. I count with the idea of having another council member on the board as well. If you're not. How does Russell counsel think about that? What?
I guess I, I see the value in having somebody off of council, but right now, we are sort of in a critical period with what we're doing with our home fire services. And I think it would be, that person would be playing a lot of catch-up on all the conversations that we've had for the last year on a really important topic for the community. So I'm not sure that I think it's the right time to do that, I think in the future that, I mean, or in addition to, I mean, if we are allowed to have somebody else, but, okay.
No, it's a set, it's set by the DAFD bylaws. Okay, well, I guess between now and next meetings, Zach, I didn't know whether you want to be on board and then figure out how to replace your name.
No, I'd say to, with Hubbard's concern, the amount of time DAFD has spent talking about our fire station is less than we expect, talk about organizational matters. They're, they're in the operations, they're not in the building.
But it's still a component of the discussion.
It hasn't been on board.
Okay, that's open for now, then. Dexter Day still has Sedan here, economic preparedness, Sedan?
Um, I have not met with Dexter Days. I, I think I brought it up to you, but I don't believe somebody else would be better than that.
Okay. Is your volunteer elect to represent us at the Dexter District?
Is it, or is that just like a person who's generally reagging with them, or they're like, they must attend their meeting?
I think it could be liaison.
Yeah.
To, to be honest, I think it just to stay in touch, if you want to have, you know, we, okay, with the setup and the take-down and to bring back.
I would be happy to.
That'd be great. Okay, Jamie, thanks.
And then I'm not sure if or, if or when they, their regular meetings are.
I don't know if they are regular.
If they ramp up, so they get closer, I don't know if they're regular.
We'll have to find out, hope you.
Yeah.
Okay. Economic preparedness. Another committee, I'm not sure if.
We haven't met since two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, so let's just cross that off, I think everybody's okay with that. Election Commission?
Uh, so election commission meets twice before each election. You usually, three months out and then a few days out. The election commission appoints the election inspector based on staff recommendation, and then we run the preliminary accuracy test.
And if a person is on the ballot?
Maybe they can answer.
They can answer, so if you're planning to be on the ballot the next two years, you can be on this.
My question wasn't, I mean, about me being on it, but I appreciate that clarification. I don't know, you know, with two years from operating, who knows? Does it have to be a member of council?
I, I believe we have it set up where it is, myself as the clerk, one member of council, and the rest, and right now, Ray Tull is appointed as the best.
Right.
So given that Jamie, Joe, and Jamie, Joe, and Dan are not likely to be on the ballot again in two years. I'm sorry. Sonam, Dan, and Joe. It would be very, it would be one of you.
And the, the kinds of those meetings are definitely less.
Finance, current with Zach and I, housing task force, Zach, I mean, you replace adoption, I'm sticking Joe, that could be used to your own committee before. Donovan, I'm sticking Joe, that could be used since you were on that committee before.
And our mandate expired.
Oh. Everybody's good with that?
I think the finance committee has only met once.
Yeah, I like to leave that for Marie, because she sometimes needs to bounce stuff off of people. Why? You expressed an interest in the year under the Washington Council?
Yeah.
That's okay with everybody to do that. Thank you, Martin, the driver's library word. Jamie, if you're good staying at Parks and Rec. Planning tomorrow, you know, they stay in there. Um, the regional resource management authority, this is sort of tied to that item we moved off the consent agenda. Um, the proposal would be for Josh to be the primary, Justin to be the alternate. Sometimes Zach, Michelle is the alternate. Spark, let me down there with Steph alternate, is that gentlemen, Michelle? Are you? Michelle's name in there. Street Committee. Dan, you expressed an interest in being on streets, right? Joe also expressed an interest in this committee. We can't have four.
Well, I don't, I don't think this one has met since 2015 either.
Wisconsin, how did you know it's free for me? Again, my, my philosophy on these committees is if we, is, we ask staff to bring stuff to us. First as a body, and then if we think it's something that needs to be studied further by a subcommittee, we have a subcommittee. Ready to do that. That's right, I've never had a.
It could be done on a net hop basis, though, if it's something that's met zero times in seven years.
That's true, too. Or your company. What?
We did discuss at one point having it meet, though, in the last year and a half, I think. I mean, we ultimately didn't do that, but I think it's good to have it, there is an option, and I'd also like to hear from Dan on that. As somebody who's been involved with the streets, if you think it's a valuable committee.
I think it was valuable at the time because it got us started, putting the list together, we're still working off of. I mean, it's almost done. Joe, I value your opinion, too, you were, you were a junior person, you were a big part of that, when we started that.
I, I think it's good to have it there just because it did come back up.
Yeah.
Like you said, the kind of major, probably going through that plan, probably wouldn't be the worst thing to have us talk about.
Because I think, so why don't we do this, and why don't we add Dan for Paul? He's Jamie and Zach, and Joe can be the alternate in case one of those three can't make it. Thank you. Urban County, that's Michelle, Utility Subcommittee. Zach, me and Jamie were the current, Joe's expressed an interest there. You can take my spot there. Joe, I can be the alternate if that, what's needed, or Dan can be the alternate, hope if you want to have an open. Danny will be the alternate, that's fine. Okay, so Joe will be the primary in utilities, and Zach and Jamie. Wave, used to be Paul, if somebody that wants to. Watch out area values best. Can we do a, can we do a staff member there if we had to?
Um, well, so, so, so. I believe we can. Yeah, I, I believe we can.
Okay. Do that for now, then, that's okay. Uh, lots, Justin has helped me a lot there. That was the policy, ultimately to me. Again, website, I think that can come off if everybody's okay. And then ZBA, Son, going to run it subcommittee, which. They lost, will not have to be too much longer, but we have a lot of Jamie on there, you guys are both okay, Stan? And then on the second page. Changing the start time for the ACH meetings is from six thirty to seven. Um, how, what do you prefer? Do you want me to have these typed up and brought back in front of council? Back it one more time? Discuss our word a little bit, think about. That? Okay.
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments on page one of six there.
Okay.
The first paragraph would be, for the result, the city councils committed to prospering environment encourages purchase local goods. That's a great sentiment, it doesn't really feel like it belongs in an organizational resolution, so I would strike that. Uh, I would also raise the question that in the meeting dates, we don't have any reference to holidays. Uh, I don't know if it's important, if the council rules do, or other schedules do. It can get tricky, whereas if you publish a schedule that says this is when our regular meetings are, and if you hold it on a different date, even if you know there can be a holiday, you publish this. You have to do special noticing requirements that can cause issues if you don't do it right. So it'd probably be good to have some reference to holiday weirdiness.
Okay? Anyone else have comments?
Uh huh, I do, in case Zach is not interested to stay in DAFD, I would be interested to be considered for that.
Okay. I will, we'll put Justin and get this updated then, and back out on the next, is that important agenda for consideration? I think it's taking the time and input on that. It was item M two is the special of city council rules. In a similar vein, we. The general rules that we operate under, including our order of business, which is our agenda. Like you can get things reviewed in place so that we can all work through them and use them. Joe, you would propose some changes? Or some suggestion changes?
Yeah.
I turn over you to go through the ones that you're proposing. Realize that there was that chance to read up on highlights or talk lots of things.
Yeah, so the first item was, I mean, a lot of people have spoken at different times about trying to have more. Time to speak with members of the public. Our meeting format doesn't really give us the opportunity to interact with people when they come in. I'm suggesting we could. Before the council meetings have a set time where. One or two council members can designate it on a rotating basis to be here ahead of time. And include that as part of the announcements for the meeting, so that people could then speak to members of the council personally. If they don't feel comfortable emailing or calling or something like that. Personally, that was the idea. With the idea that whatever discussions that were had would be brought forward and relayed to council. The second one was preparation agenda material. Some of it just procedural stuff. But then there's the, the proposal for the idea that we have a proposed agenda item. Uh, which should be added for, instead of having. Agenda items sent. In by the five P M. of the Monday before, it would be requested to add an item for a proposed agenda item, and then have proposed agenda item. As a motion in a second, and an affirmative vote of council will be placed onto a future agenda. So it takes a little bit more planning, uh, would also make sure that, that's something that council wanted to discuss and consider. Um, also. A little bit extra added there about if it was an urgent or time sensitive item, then council can motion to amend the agenda to add an item that was needed to be considered. More. Regular process that we have as a city manager and the mayor preparing the agenda. Would continue. Um, the updates to. Agenda include, uh, under three, the third one's proposal, two point three order of business. I was. Proposing that the non-range participation would come before approval of the agenda. Um, and then also declaration of conflicts of interest should come before the approval of the agenda. So that, if possible, those items could be addressed when the agenda is approved. Communications, I'm proposing to strike out council number reports. Uh, because that can be. Part of council comments. Um, there's some discussion about rationale for some of that. According in the meetings, it has a comment there about the voting. It says that the record shall also state when the vote is by voice or roll call, and when by roll call, the record shall show the yes. And I struck out the end of extension, just made it yes and no for each member. And then under voting, I struck out after my roll call, except for adjournment, could have believed the approval of minutes in the agenda, generally due by roll call anyway. Some of the. Other comments there about the, what came up recently about the number of votes needed, that. Motion adopted by the majority of council's president and ordinance required us for more council members, that's from the city charter. On the meeting minutes. Our meeting minutes right now have a lot of detail in them, proposing that those would be, we revise that format to strictly be the bare minimum information needed to. Have a record of the, uh, discussion action, not the details. There's even some wording in council rules now about that council comments can be requested to be included in the minutes, suggesting that otherwise council comments should not be included or made of. In the meeting minutes. Uh, for the. Abstaining the, so the conflict of interest ordinance. Says pretty clearly, it says. If there's a conflict of interest, then. The person with the conflict shall do the immediately following. Including the last item number five in that section seventeen seven, during deliberation of the agenda. Support commission, leave the meeting room until that agenda items concluded. So. If there's a conflict of interest, then that person should not be present for the deliberation and voting of that agenda item. It would be marked absent and not abstained. There's no reason to have an abstain, because if you have a conflict, you shouldn't be there at the time that the vote's taking place anywhere. Yes or no, that's it. Uh, rules of conduct or debate number six. Debate to be limited, the rules right now say debate will be limited, both. Add in the city manager based on the charter stating that the city manager. Their function and duties include attending all meetings of council with the right to be heard in all council proceedings, or without the right to vote. Also struck out, or proposed to strike out, the first two item or a couple of items that under conduct of norms abide by the decision of council, once a decision's been made. And resist the temptation when you disagree with the decision, to try and undermine the decision, continuing concerns about a decision should be discussed privately. In my experience, nobody follows that. All the people that bring it up are the people that are on the prevailing side, but somebody that's on the non-provailing side bring concerns and issues. And that hasn't been. That hasn't been. Literally, everybody's done. Nobody was, had been into that, and. It just. The government, we just shouldn't tell people what they can and can't talk about, or opinion that they can express. Altering their amendment council rules, adding an emailing absence of the rules, we use Robert's rules. The, the rules say in a brief adverb, where our rules is attached, at one point in time, we did have a two pager that had a bunch of. Lots with different motions and how they were ranked. Justin provided some links and. Included a copy of one of the. Robert tools, potential Robert tools in there. Uh, just a two-page summary. And then one item that I had for discussion, well, there's actually two of them under, one about the city attorney, that basically would say that the city attorney, that. The council requests a legal opinion that. The press would just be made by a motion from the council, and that city manager should consult as necessary in accordance with previous budget expenditure. The other item that I put in there for potential for discussion. The city charter says, except for purposes of inquiries and investigations under section six six. The council members shall be with city officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the city manager solely through the city manager. Individual councilmen should not give any orders. So give order to any such officer or employee, even publicly or privately. So it does say, except for the purpose of inquiries and investigations under section six. I, you know, assume that would include things like, uh, working with staff on committees and, uh, asking questions about things like the council items. But it's just a. It would explicitly, if we were to consider something like that, it would explicitly. Remind council of that. Responsible to communicate through the city manager. Uh, lastly was some of the items about Robert's rules, some of the things that can help make the. Meetings go a little bit quicker. Just following Robert's rules can help on making promotions for amendments and other things. Robert's rules doesn't have a provision for friendly amendment. It's pretty easy to make an amendment, a motion for amendment, though, and vote on it. Uh, it typically clarifies things. It also gives people who might have a minority opinion and an opportunity to raise that and have discussion. Um, the other thing is, uh, the second, or the last time I had on there was. I feel pretty strongly that we should, as much as possible. Have our discussions be about policy. And not questions of fact. We do spend a lot of time going through some of the minutia and details in the items that end up being in the packet. And, uh, those are often things that can be communicated ahead of time to staff. And when that's the case, those things, if they're not. If they're not things that are something that has to be discussed as far as a, you know, if it's not a why, if it's just a what. It's not something we need to necessarily spend time on. That's most of it.
Thank you for giving so much thought to these. Are there any thoughts or actions? On exactly?
So, as part of my job, I've been responsible for writing rules or bylaws depending on which body. For over a dozen communities. And these read very janky the very first time I saw them, and you can see the number of times it's been touched. It's very janky, I, I abstain from talking about bigger stuff, because we really haven't forced it or followed it too closely, but I appreciate the opportunity to. To have some discussion on this. I'll say my, I want to frame this as, we use a metaphor here, uh, planning and zoning metaphor, so one of the big thing now in rural communities is solar farms. They're really coming hard, they're going to be here, especially if you have utilities. Challenge a lot of communities will get into is they're going to want to discuss the details, what zoning district can it be, how tall can they be, how far back they have to be. Before having a bigger discussion of, do we want them, how do they fit, how do they not fit? And it feels like we have not had a discussion about the bigger picture of what the policy, what works, what doesn't work. I would say to the bigger picture, um, I would pose a question to staff, if it'd be useful for. Materials to be due Monday morning or Friday at night to allow for better preparation. I would agree that we need to have better clarity for how items get on the agenda, the proposal from Mr. Sun. I would agree that we need to have better clarity for how items get on the agenda. The proposal from Mr. Sam Faro of those seems. Very long and resistant to stopping. So if you follow the times, it could be a month from the time you submit it. Until it can get to the agenda, but I do need to have some some better clarity on how things. Get in there. I have some minutia for the the actual agenda of the meetings, but I will leave that for later. A couple of things for recording of meetings that I noticed is. We don't reference there the posting of resolutions on the website. I think that's important. There were some issues with the. The bond that council doesn't see this part of our minutes. It was different from what the actual voting language was, so it'd be good to get that public sunshine. It'd also be.
We, what are you, are you suggesting it's something we need to add to the rules? I I've just missed what you.
Yes, we're we're posting minutes, resolutions ought to be posted and displayed and video as well. I mean, we're we're doing it, but if it's in the rules. It provides clarity and guidance for staff.
Posting where or how?
Through the website.
Okay.
Let's see. I would also say that the five minutes that we give for members of the public for the public comment, we call something else. Could be extremely long. A lot of communities will instead say three minutes with the chair can extend it up to five unless there are objections. Council can always vote to extend that. I'd also caution, we have language in here that says when you can have a group. That's become very tricky with some recent case law, or if you're part of a group, you may not have standing to challenge a decision, so we should probably strike that. Sorry, a little bit minutia there. But yeah, I I would like to have kind of a bigger discussion of what's working, what's not working, what else we would like to see before we get to the next. That's all.
I guess you just made a couple of notes. So regarding the. Council members meeting in advance of the meeting. Obviously, like they get council members meeting as public. My concern with this proposal is that it might give the appearance that those rotating council members have been authorized to serve speak. On the council or otherwise represent the council. In that capacity, so I think my preference is just for council members to meet in public how they feel most comfortable doing that. With regard to submitting agenda item, I also think we have a mechanism in place via approval of the agenda. Something on the agenda and the majority council is only talking about it. That can be changed at that point. I wonder if we move conflicts of interest in advance. Of the approval of the agenda, if something is changed during the approval of the agenda, does it make that declaration a moot point? If that item has been taken off the agenda. And then regarding the conflict of interest ordinance and recusal from the meeting. I wonder specifically for the consent agenda where we don't actually have discussion on that item. If that is considered deliberation of an item, if we're just voting on it and there's no discussion. So I don't know who would provide clarity on that interpretation. Those are some initial thoughts. I would like to. Obviously not.
So the rules are going to be. What we have in place effective last November is what we're starting now. So. Going to take. A motion by somebody to add these. So if there's. There's other thoughts or other things that you want people to consider. And I encourage you to get them in the packet before next meeting. At least have to read them before you go into the table as well.
That's another structural flaw that's in here is that right now technically we have no rules. We're Lord of the Flies right now. We should definitely add continuance language that it continues until about to. And so to that effect, I would move that we can continue the rules as they currently exist and postpone discussion until next meeting.
I don't think that's necessarily true. The, you know, I can't remember where it is. I'm trying to find it right now. But I thought there was something on the rules that said within sixty days. And but. Or for consideration and adoption of new rules.
So here's the deep down parliamentary thing. Once new council is seated, the previous council can't force new council to do something. So we can't force upon the next council, here are your rules. You must look at it within a certain amount of time.
Where are you reading that, Zach?
How parliamentary procedure works. I disagree. The council rules as have been established and are listed.
On the agenda today.
They span over the the. Elections and it says specifically council rules shall be reviewed and documented within sixty days after the general election or change in membership. Council Dr. Rose may be altered or amended by a vote of the majority of members and notice of the proposed change of proceeding being. It can be updated or changed by the members of the council. It doesn't say that they expire. It just says council and councils, council. Legislative bodies have to read doctor rules every time we see it. Or legislative body. Legislative bodies also adopt their own rules and our rules don't say these rules expire. Says that they are to be revisited sixty days after the general election, so they continue to sixty days after the general election.
And we never operate it as if it expires. And that's that's how we keep our agenda. That's the best example I can give you is the agenda follows these rules. The order of the agenda. Well, the intent was not to. Act on this today. The goal is to initiate discussion on them. I would like to have something in place. Either at the next meeting, certainly by January, but the next meeting would be ideal because we typically don't have a heavy agenda during the holiday. So there's other things that people aren't considered. I asked for the please to put that to Justin so he can put in the back if people think about it ahead of time. And then, you know, from my perspective, this is the starting point. And. We have to make commitments to add or pick out winter dozen to fill. So thank you for the thoughts on this. I appreciate the comments too. And then the thought is that. Something like this should be included as the attachment to the rules. I don't know what we all know was what we got to know, but we didn't, we didn't used to have. Two major blocks in front and back that had example motions required and kind of work thing. You're heard it. So this is this is. Okay.
Leave a motion at second on the table.
Yeah. But is there any further discussion? It's to postpone the next meeting to keep the rules the same, so. We feel we need to do that. I'm going to prove the question on that motion. As I understand it, the motion is to keep the rules the same, postpone exactly until actually keep the rules the same.
Correct.
I mean, we postpone the motion until the rules have been voted on by the council. So then you mean we postpone the motion until we go on the list. And approve the rules.
Yeah, it's like a part because it sounds like, sorry, second that that I have a comment. It sounds like we don't have a consensus amongst the group as to whether or not we need that as a rule, so. What Zach's talking about, so I think we can add that to this discussion, so that's.
Okay, so we have a subject one motion to postpone the previous motion. By Joe, seconded by Ron. You guys are all making this very hard. Or is unnecessary. Is there any discussion on that second post comment, Jamie?
Yeah, I just, I lost my spot. Rule twelve, I I guess it's just not clear to me why I would say the rules need to be adopted within sixty days. If they do just carry over, if they just carry over, it seems to me they never need to be adopted.
The goal is to get any changes in place so you can operate under that body. Otherwise, you still have to lead some some sort of process to to work under.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying. I I get that intent. I'm not, it's not clear to me that that language. I don't have authority on that, so in the essence of authority, I'm fine making that explicit via the original motion. That's all I think there is in the law to that because we just make it explicit, given that some people think that's unclear.
So this speaks to the need for us to receive some basic parliamentary training. I know Mr. Byron knows, talks with me, the resources here. And to clarify, if this motion to postpone a previous motion. Is adopted, that would mean coming on the next agenda will be a motion postponed to continue and postpone for the next meeting after that.
Yeah, the motion postponed until those are. So this is, sorry.
Again, discussion until they're about to.
Yep. And a discussion right now should be whether or not we're going to postpone, not about the.
Well, it was postponed, the motion that was on the table. Which was we would discuss at the next meeting. Yeah, the the motion that I made was to continue the rules that exist now and postpone further discussion on them until the next meeting. If that motion is postponed, that will come on this unfinished business to continue them and discuss them over the next year.
So sorry. So I I I'm reading it the same way that Zach is, there's a motion postponed, then there's a motion to postpone, postpone that. So maybe for for the second motion, if rather than a a motion postponed, maybe it's a a motion. To replace the previous motion. With a motion postponed.
I moved to place this on table until the conclusion of the rest of the business, so folks that are here can participate.
Second.
And so essentially we'd be gave by this until the end of the business. That the intent of that?
Yep.
And go back. Discussion on that. Okay, Pam, please call about table this topic two after the rest of the business.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Our, yes, our, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are now on to M three, consideration of proposal from HOE GM advisors for traffic study of Meadowview and Dexterian Arbor for Mount Mount City nine thousand. Monster gearing, I think, has been hanging out online. Recently. I was back to this. To get started.
Second.
And moved by last second by Joe. Okay. Justin, do you want to introduce?
Sure.
Yeah, so I can I can start it then hand it over to Steve. Earlier this year, I want to say March-ish timeframe, we got. A proposal from HOE GM to look at four intersections. And at the time, council opted to move forward with with. An analysis of two of those intersections. The other two council didn't move forward with, so they were just kind of hanging out. Council didn't didn't move to. Didn't opt to not move forward with them, just. They kind of fell off. So I want to say at the second meeting in September. The topic of Meadowview and Arbor and the the schools. Came up again and at the time. There was some discussion that there was a formal motion, but the request was to have staff come back with a proposal to. To evaluate this intersection to see if there was anything that we could do. To help alleviate some of the the turning issues into and out of middle school. So I reached out to HOE GM and traffic workers put me in touch with or. Touch base with Steve Dearing, who is one of the senior traffic engineers. Then he had a very proposal to do a more comprehensive analysis of that intersection, including. You know, turnings, pavement, pavement markings, the turn signal, signalization and so on and so forth. So with that, which I came back with the price of nine thousand and. Steve, if there's anything you want to add or or touch on part of this proposal.
If he's on mute. Steve, I think we're still.
Anybody hear me now?
There we go. Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. What I wanted to say is that. We put a team together that represents a lot of experience in not only just school safety reviews. But also the general review of intersections and intersection safety. So Taryn Jodacy is going to be the project manager for this project. She's got over eighteen years of experience and she'll be responsible to make sure that the team understands what the the. The task to be accomplished. Making sure that they push and maintain the schedule so that we can deliver this to you on time. And of course, make sure that we keep it within the fee that we proposed for you. The actual lead traffic engineer is a gentleman by the name of Stefan Maxi. And he will be assisted by a young graduate engineer lady by name of Lauren Hell. We're going to do all the data collection in house instead of using a sub consultant just to make sure that we can get it done as quickly as possible. And my role basically is the, I'm a senior technical leader and I'm going to be doing the quality control, quality assurance to make sure that. They've done a thorough job that all of the findings are substantiated by the the data that we've collected. And that all of the recommendations are actually appropriate for the problems found.
Does anybody have any questions for Steve or HOE GM on on the proposal? Zach?
I have a couple. First would be, how do you view this as being different from a typical? Warrant study. Seems like light plus lanes.
Well. Of course, we're going to be collecting a lot of the sort of data that you would look at for a warrant study. But more than that. We're using people that are used to. Viewing intersections in the field. And recognizing whether. The operations are appropriate or not. You know, the data collection will help, but. What we really want is to put eyes. On the ground or boots on the ground, actually have people eyeball the intersection. So that when we put the computer models together. The models are just a tool and they're supposed to be an approximation of reality. Having viewed the actual operations, they'll be able to. Calibrate the model so it comes as closest possible to reflecting the reality. Of what's being experienced at that school driveway. And then with a properly. And then with a properly calibrated model, then we can easily do those what-if games in terms of, you know, adding left turn signal phases, uh, changing the allocation of green time between the different movements and things like that. So th- this is not just a paper study using a computer model. We want to have the field validation of the model to ensure that we're getting good results and can, uh, suggest improvements that will actually make a difference.
My next question would be, I did not see on the description of the project consultation with the school. Is that part of the plan or is it not part of the plan to consult with the school?
Well, it, it, it's intrinsic to the school. I mean, the, the fact that that's, it's just not only an intersection of two of your major roads. It's also the school driveway. So the interaction of school pedestrians at that intersection during the arrival and dismissal times will be a very important consideration. And we are not going to be looking at making it better for the vehicles if it in any way, um, puts in danger or, or, uh, subserviates the needs of the pedestrians, given the fact that, again, this is a school age population of pedestrians.
All right, so, um, I'm trying to figure out how holistic this is likely to be, might possible recommendations be working with the school to, for example, have start time to be twenty minutes later so it doesn't catch the, the general wash of everyone running into the school or recommend doing a Michigan left on the Meadowview so there's no left turning actions? Or is it going to be more of the, the engineering things, do you believe?
Yeah, we're, we're going to be working with the school. We're going to be looking at how their operations on their site impact the operations of this intersection.
Are there any other questions for Steve or, or Justin?
Jamie? I just have a general comment. I'd be curious to know if schools can contribute to any of the financial cost of this. I think one thing that residents appreciate is consistency in decision-making. And when we approved Kid Lane Montessori on Baker Road, one of the explicit condition, um, did I lose my highlight in here? Is that they must agree they will not cause traffic to back up onto Baker Road. So I think I raised that point when we approved that, um, at that time. My concern is that there's possibly an inconsistency here and whose obligation it is to maintain traffic coming into their this business, this location, et cetera. So in, on one hand, we made it a requirement for an educational institution that they cannot cause a traffic backup. And in this case, we have a school that has been consistently causing a traffic backup. And now we're fronting the cost to solve that track up, solve the backup that they caused. So I don't know if there's any cost share that the schools would be willing to participate in.
Did you have any conversation at all with schools about this?
Uh, not yet. So I, I, I had a conversation with Chris Dennis last week. Cover a couple of topics. Um, this was also on my list, but, uh, cut, cut the conversation short. This is still on my list, uh, conversation, this is about.
Those. Can't feel like they want to wait, is that Justin have a conversation with students before taking action on this?
Um, I feel there's a little bit of a difference in this, that the Montessori school is a private business. And this is a public school district. That's the, that's the difference that I, I think. It's kind of like residence support book, residents pay taxes for both. It's like taking one money out of the same pocket to the other. So it's kind of like, you know, what I mean is like two bank accounts of the same place that people put their taxes in, so it's. That's my opinion.
Okay, any thoughts or questions? Okay, Miss Pam, please, there's a motion on the table. Move the proposal for not to exceed amount nine thousand. Motion by last, and by Joe, is that correct? Please call the vote.
Aron, yes. Hover, yes. Shaw.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Semen Pharaoh.
Yes.
Griffin, no. Keo.
Yes. Okay, motion passes six to one, due to the side of M four, discussion of the public safety facility. Steve, thanks for attending this evening and for your work. So I think that, um, M four, discussion of public safety facilities, next steps and bonding process. Justin, both, whatever information, I'll turn this over to you.
Sure, so, um, Marie and I had a conversation with, um, our bond counsel and Baker Tilly. And, um, just to, just to kind of kick off, um, getting some questions answered about the, the bonding process. And, um, kind of understanding what the parameters are going forward. And, uh, that information was provided in, in the back end of the, just one, one nine, one thirty. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the bonding process. It, it will look substantially similar to what we did to buy for, um, the purchase of this building. Just different initiation of that process, so, um, yeah, obviously, the, the residents approved a, um, through the bond proposal, it was included on ballot. But, but next, uh, the next step really is the, the council, council bond resolution to just kind of finalize that amount that we will be bonding for and to, to initiate that process.
But from what, what you presented here, we're not in any, there's no requirement from which to issue. If we decided tomorrow or at our next meeting to do it, that could be done. But if we decided a year from now, that could be also be done. There's no requirement, is right.
Correct.
But once, once it's initiated.
We have three years to.
Correct, yeah, we have, um, we have a certain amount of time to basically allocate the funds or, or commit to spending the funds. Yeah. And then, uh, then we have the three years to spend.
Okay. Well, my, my thought is that we need to spend some, uh, good counsel discussion time, starting in January, February, March, on, you know, next steps for your location first, or not, for both, or wherever we decide is important to sell this. Uh, I'm thinking that January, we start that discussion, and hopefully can figure out where we're going to do, whatever we're going to do, and then get the architects working on that.
Uh, for those not involved for our construction projects, we are not in the window anymore for a spring shovel breaking. The companies were at the very back right now and we don't have an idea where, which site we're going to build and what we're going to build, uh, which means the earliest we could break ground would be at the end of the summer. We usually pay more and we'll get lower quality contractors because the good ones get booked up the whole year. That's how they make money is they know what they're going to do, which likely means we're going to be pushed back to twenty twenty-four construction. So whoever's preparing the plans, keep in the back of your mind the likely cost escalation for fire facilities is going to be anywhere from five to twenty percent from what our estimates are from the twenty twenty-three start to twenty twenty-four start.
Um, Justin, one question that I'd like to ask David from Partners is what he expects the design period to be. How, how, how long, because I'm period, what does that look like from his perspective? And I would say he could use the two scenarios that we, you know, provided to the public in September as examples, just as a basis of knowledge.
Zach, in order for him to give accurate information, we'd also have to provide the parameters if we're doing design bid, build, design bid, or construction manager.
Yeah.
Or construction manager, or so, so we'll vary widely, yeah, design when it happens and where it happens.
Assume a traditional design, then bid, then build. I'm not saying that you decided, just to let you know what the basis, basic time on it is, and then we can adjust from there, if I don't like how that looks or sounds. And this is good information, Justin. I appreciate you pulling all this together.
And, um, and, you know, I, I left, you know, the option open to discuss kind of what you, like the next steps would look like in the conversation to get any come to the determination of a location.
But does, does either Baker Tilly or how close is the do they have an approximation on the bond cost?
Uh. For four, even, or, 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 or for like percent?
I don't know, but this talks about, you know, the, the thought about, or we could do one or more series, or we could duplicate or duplicate the cost, this issue's cost, I'm just wondering about that issue's cost.
So I want to say for, for this.
Yeah, it was like fifty grand.
Yeah.
For two million, but it is. That ran off, or is it, or is it still fifty grand, great man?
Oh, I, I can ask.
That's what I'm trying to get in, yeah. Thank you. Okay, so if there's a favor that we'll, we'll set that as a primary agenda for, for meeting in January. Okay. Will be discussion of next steps, i.e. location or amount that we're comfortable with. And there was, there was some discussion about, you know, can we do it for less than what we asked the voters for? We need to figure out some of those questions.
The, the, the other thing to, to take into consideration with that discussion, and I did it included in the report, is that, um, for us to be able to include on the, you know, if, if we're to do a July first, twenty twenty-three, no, not levy, we'd have to start the process basically in, in February or early March.
Yeah. Which may be too soon. I mean, I, I'm, I'm personally thinking that we're going to need to give the architect, basically all what it took them to design just the stuff right here, renovation, I would say we're not living in that, in July. But I could be wrong.
So is the thinking, I mean, I would be comfortable as a council, considering the latest versions of the two sites, having one discussion about that, making a decision, and then, I guess, giving direction to the architect to then flesh out the one plan? Or is the thought that we need to flesh out both plan in greater detail? No.
I'd like to get to one and then give them direction to, you know, prepare a design for one. Now, if you decide to do a different process where, you know, construction manager at risk, or?
Yeah, I think I need at most two meetings to make a decision on the location, just from my perspective, from what I've gone so far and the discussions we've got so far. I would like to make that determination swiftly as well.
Understood. I'm not trying to delay it, I'm just saying, I think that's a copy we did here, Jamie. Well.
I agree that I would also like to make that decision as quickly as possible. I have a question, I'm wondering how others feel about this, since we have two new people at the table, would it be worth having a work session, one work session just so we can have a more organic conversation about it? And I mean, the rest of us have had the opportunity to do that together, but we do have two new voices here. And I think that, in my perspective, I think that might be valuable to get us moving to a faster decision.
Before me.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to run that in? Got the apple? Do you want to do that prior to anyone?
I'd be fine with that.
So that's me, man?
First thing you, first thing.
I mean, I would be fine with that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you'd get.
That's good. Can you see if David's available on the twelve, December? I think it's the twelfth, right? Okay. Sounds good, good suggestion. Okay, any other questions or information that we want staff to bring back? Okay, we'll move down to M five, discussion of the zoning ordinance update and subdivision ordinance update.
That would be the Michelle in the show now. So, excuse me, you've had a small discussion regarding the subdivision ordinance already and some comments and questions and responses back. Excuse me, um, with the two new members of council, uh, the thought was that, uh, a discussion of both the zoning ordinance update and the subdivision ordinance update would be appropriate at this time before, um, coming into summer to schedule the public hearing on the subdivision ordinance for, um, January. So, um, I'm going to turn this over to Megan, and she's going to take you through a PowerPoint explaining, um, everything behind the updates for the zoning and the subdivision control. And Josh, if you can share this with me.
So, good evening. My name is Megan Mastameno. I'm with Carl Warren Associates. Um, I've met most of you, um, and to your two new members, uh, thank you for taking on four hundred pages at your first meeting. We'll go through this, but, um, first, while that power committee is getting up, I just want to thank everybody who's been part of this process. It's four hundred pages, but it's also been two years. I think everybody around the table has, um, seen this or touched this in some way. But I especially want to recognize the subcommittee, um, which Wa and Jamie were part of, um, that put a lot of effort into, um, crafting these ordinances. Um, and a lot of the things that were put in them came directly from that subcommittee and their ideas and their research. And so without their help, we, we wouldn't have the ordinances here before you today. Um, also, the planning commission put in a lot of work and we had a lot of public who came out in the last three months who gave really constructive criticism and, um, I think made the ordinances better and more responsive to what the community needs. So I wanted to thank everybody who's been part of that. Thank you, Josh. Um, so, um, we're here tonight, um, to have a discussion, the presentation that we prepared goes over the process. The purpose of the ordinance rewrite, um, in terms of the zoning ordinance, the proposed changes and how those are equivalent to preservation of what makes Dexter Dexter. Also, there were some changes by the planning commission, again, in, in response to that constructive criticism. So we wanted to highlight that for you tonight, um, you have the time and patience, um, and then also talk about next steps. So if we can go down to the next one, where it's the, there, yeah, excellent. Um, so we had ordinance assessments that really started the end of twenty twenty. Um, we started drafting regulations through twenty twenty-one, again, working with the subcommittee. Um, had a full draft review with early twenty-two by the subcommittee, and then a transition, um, to reformatting, refining those in mid twenty twenty-two with the planning commission, and looking to adopt, um, in the fall. Um, and there was information on the website throughout, um, but also at the end, the SCAD did a great job, um, especially, um, Grace put a lot of time into sending letters, um, and we had some open houses. So everybody whose zoning was changed, even in a small way, got a letter. And that adoption process then had a few blips. We had a lot of A B challenges September sixth, so we had to cancel that hearing. But actually, it was a great thing because we could really sit down and talk to the people who came out with concerns. And because of the nature of a public hearing where they had to talk and do that, they need to talk. Actually, having that Q and A kind of format was, I think, beneficial. And then we could get some, again, constructive criticism. On October third, the planning commission had their public hearing and we're here tonight for your discussion. Hopefully, the subdivisions ordinance public hearing happened in December of twenty twenty-two and looking to also adopt the zoning ordinance as well. You could adopt the zoning ordinance tonight if you wanted because it's been recommended by the planning commission. So again, could you go to the next one? The purpose of the rewrite, there were a number of things. First, there's always some housekeeping issues with zoning, state law changes, things. Supreme Court cases happen. That was one of the things, big changes with your signs. So also part of it was to make the ordinance easier to use. And so in this version, also, you'll notice all the illustrations are of the same type or family graphic image. Also, when moving to a form-based zoning, which I'll talk a little bit more about, also wanting to have as many opportunities for things to be on one page. You can look at it and understand it at the glance. Also, the purpose of any zoning ordinance is to implement the master plan and the vision of the community. And so those things are baked into here to do that, and that's also part of the reason to have a form-based code. But really, the nut of it all is to preserve what makes Dexter Dexter. And hopefully can show you how that happens as proposed. Thank you, Josh. There's two types of zoning districts proposed. Right now, you only have use-based districts. And so use-based is exactly what it is. You're primarily grouping things together on a map by use. And then all the dimensional requirements are treated almost all entirely the same. And that works when there's a lot of the same uses all clustered together, like a residential neighborhood. However, with an old village like yours and the downtown and mixed-use corridors, like you have Baker and Dexter in our road. That's often not the most effective tool. We found that these form-based districts, which regulate not only by use, but by building type and by road type. Those offer a toolbox to really implement the vision and preserve the texture and the fabric of a place like Dexter. So if you go to the next one. Or a little bit on the form-based zoning. So this is a regulating map, regulating plan. These are in the form-based districts. And I'm going to walk you through how these make Dexter Dexter, starting at twelve o'clock and working my way around. So at twelve o'clock, you see a house that faces out onto Monument Park. And the proposal is to bring that and the other houses around there into the central business district. But you'll know that those are very different than the mixed-use buildings that, you know, you can look across the street or the Dairy Queen and see. So, and that's the reason that those are site type A. Basically, in a site type A, when you see anywhere in the village, that's primarily going to be allowed to be a house. And the house then could be converted into different uses. For instance, the house here could be an office. It could have first floor residential. It could be used as a home. But also, it could be a retail establishment. And that's what's going on now. And then the green is the, it's my, so, and that's the same with the Honeybee House. But what's in this is architectural regulations to also make sure that you get the same quality and standard of those houses and that goes with the block and what's on the block, rather than having a brand-new house. And there's also some other regulations in terms of what the houses could be, in terms of you have to, you, you have, the garage has to be set back. The park is the park. We'll always see the park, and that's the reason it's colored as green. And then you'll notice as we go around, there's a building that offices in the building, Dairy Queen, and then your mixed-use corridor, your traditional buildings that are down Main Street. And those are site type C. And in site type C, you can only have a mixed-use building and using a special land use. So everybody within three hundred feet notified. There could be a single-use building like the Dairy Queen. So we're saying that if you're going to do something a little different and have a one-story, single-use building or two-story, single-use building. Between these, a little extra scrutiny. We need a little more discretion. Then, and the difference between, and the reason, and you'll see on those streets also, on Main Street, it's a big, bold line. Whereas there's other ones that are sit-down lines. On that big, bold line, that is the downtown Main Street, and that means no curb cuts are allowed. So if you can imagine if the gas station was redeveloped, would you want curb cuts there? And the answer is no, probably not, or there would have to be extraordinary circumstances. So this writes that right into the code. And while we're talking about that, that's a site type D. And you'll notice where those are, are prominent locations that are entering into the downtown. But in other zoning districts, those are prominent locations that are entering into the city itself. And those are called out that those are going to be highly scrutinized areas. It calls them out and lets people know who are looking to redevelop or develop them, that you're going to have a high level of scrutiny there. And it also then sets up the cities to be able to have that higher level of scrutiny. Site type E is the darker ones, and you'll see that those are mostly on Forest Street or Baker or on Alpine. And those will allow mixture of uses and a mixture of buildings. So those are the most free-flowing in the downtown. But when you look at those in neighborhoods, so in the VR one or the VR two, they're occasionally there, like St. Joe's Church, if it was ever redeveloped. Those are more restricted to institutional uses there and multiple family. And again, those are usually special land uses. If those areas wanted to be redeveloped, somebody wanted to redevelop them into houses, as long as they had the lots on the appropriate sizes, they could do that, and that would be more of a, that would be by right. So as I walked you through this, I hope you can see that this gives you a lot more tools to preserve what's there. And if redevelopment happens, then for that to be of the quality and again, matching the historic nature of what's what's beside it and what's in the, in that area. And these areas were chosen for very specific reasons. I wanted to share these historical areas for you. So this is from nineteen sixty, and you can see in there that where the development is because it's a darker gray. And it's all around those square blocks that are the original village. If you can scroll to the next one. You can see in this colored one, that's from twenty twenty, and there's two really different development patterns, especially around where your neighborhoods are. There's the historic ones that are the blocks, but then there's also the places that were annexed in the nineteen nineties, the two thousands. And those are more of the curvilinear streets that are, who'd be said, that'd be a little more suburban in nature. Also, the industrial park and the school districts, they have a very different land use pattern, too. You can see that there's not too many buildings and the roads are spread out. So you can see a lot more green and, and browns there, whereas when you get where the houses are, it gets a lot denser. So you can go to the next one. So those uses, the form-based districts are, you can see are under or overlayed where that development was in the nineteen sixties photo. Primary. And the use-based ones that are proposed are those that were developed later. So probably eighties, nineties to, in past two thousand. There's another factor, go to the next one, it's the number of uses. So as I said in the beginning, a use-based district works really well when you have the same types of uses, like a residential district that's West Ridge, Dexter Crossing, or, or also the business, the industrial park. But along Dexter and Arbor Road or Baker Road, where there's been more development since nineteen sixty, you can see that there's a number of different uses allowed there. And then the planning commission, the master plan, and your housing task force actually set, also said, we should have the opportunity for different types of residential and allow those more along those corridors of Dexter and Arbor Road and Baker. And the, and Baker Road. So that is another reason to pull those form-based districts all the way down those two corridors is to allow those number of uses. Go to the next one. Also, your current zoning has some great architectural regulations. You make, you require that the architecture is consistent with historical buildings in the central business district. For instance, you have a minimum building height of two stories, requiring parking in the rear and on the street. Seventy percent windows, exterior walls have a finished appearance. These are all good things that you already had in ordinance. Go to the next slide. But this proposed ordinance takes it a little bit of a step further that the, in the downtown, in most, actually anywhere where there's architectural controls, that the architecture is consistent with buildings within one block. So you're really looking at the context of each one because some blocks are very different than the other. And then, as I said, on this block, you can see that only two to three-story mixed-use buildings are allowed on this block. You can have, you can have a single-use building as a specialty use. Also, there are sidewalk design requirements. So in central business district, you would have a ten-foot sidewalk as a minimum. But then also, there's flexibility that if someone wanted to do a plaza or gathering space, they could actually step their building back and have that developed as part of it. Rather than right now, if somebody came with that proposal, you would probably be looking at variances or PUD to help, help make that happen. So those are the proposals there in terms of trying to keep Dexter Dexter. If you go to the next one, thank you. Siderville is a great place here in Dexter. Right now, it has C one zoning. And that C one zoning is a special land use would allow that, that site to be redeveloped as a gas station or another automotive use. And there are no architectural standards. So what's proposed is that this goes to a village commercial. It's a site type D, again, that prominent site. There are architectural standards. And here, if it was redeveloped, it could be a single-use building, an institutional building, townhouses, a multiple-family building. And the uses that could be allowed are residential, retail, institutional, but there wouldn't be any auto uses allowed. Because that's, because of that site type. Also, there are different regulations for neighborhoods that are in the, inside the village and those that are outside. So right now, Dover and Webster, these have the same zoning, same rules for these two blocks. And they're different blocks.
Megan, there's a question.
Yeah.
On the last page.
Yeah.
What exactly does it mean by the auto uses? At the very bottom, no auto uses allowed.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any auto uses allowed in the proposed village commercial.
Gas stations.
No gas stations, no garages. Yeah, so, yeah. No, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Thank you. So you have the same, so the same zoning is required for these blocks. There's no requirements on garages. Each has a seventy-eight hundred square foot minimum. And Dover is the street where those lots are not generally seventy-eight thousand, it's seventy-eight hundred square feet and a sixty-feet minimum lot. So again, what's proposed is that there's two different zoning districts for this area, for these areas. For Dover, that's a village residential. The garage needs to be at least five feet behind the front of the house. Porches can be five feet closer than the front yard setback to allow for those porches for new builds or existing builds, because we know that you've had variances for those and sometimes that gets to, it's a little tight. There's a proposed decrease to forty-nine hundred square feet for a minimum lot size and forty-nine and a half feet for the minimum lot width. And then R one zoning, right now, you have R one A and R one B. It just uses the R one A minimum lot sizes for anything that's of a suburban nature. The only thing that really is, there's limited changes to accessory buildings, but that seventy-eight hundred square feet would remain the same as a minimum lot size and the sixty feet for the minimum width would remain the same, and there's no requirements for the garage placement. So the goal is that we're trying to eliminate non-conformities as much as possible within the zoning, not create any more. Also, on the proposed zoning, if you go to the next one, to implement the master plan, there were goals for natural resources and objectives. So Article fifteen on environmental provisions, this is proposed to be added with performance standards. Wetland, stormwater rating, environmental quality, construction, floodplain, some of these are already in your zoning ordinance. They were all just grouped into, they were grouped into one place and then some things were added. For instance, if anything is coming for a site plan review, and I believe it's ten years or larger, it has to have a natural features assessment. And so that the planning commission then can see how natural features were on this, are on the site now and how they've been designed around or not designed around. So you can see that the two, the current zoning map and proposed zoning map, you have less districts, but the form-based districts have more complicated regulations. But I'm going to stop there before I leap into planning commission recommendations and see if anybody has any questions about form-based versus use-based or why you need those, why, why different tactics or choices were made.
Can you go back three slides to the proposed zoning? One more. That one. What does it mean, no, under the zoning use base, no requirements for garage placement?
Means that the garages are where they are. The, so that means in contrast to the village residential, the village residential says the garage has to be set fifteen feet back from the property line or five feet back and not fifteen, it has to be. There's a five-foot gap in between the front facade and the facade, the front base of any attached garage. And there's not that type of regulation now, and there's not that type of regulation proposed for the use-based neighborhood.
But it still has to be within setback.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, no requirement is a weird phrase to me.
All right, I apologize.
I'm just confused by it. Okay, I understand. Okay.
Okay.
You still mean that they're, they're within setbacks though?
Yeah, within setbacks, of course. Yeah.
Just on the R one zoning, the seventy square feet, Michelle, is that the same as R one B right now or R one A or is it something else?
R one B was seventy-eight hundred, R one A was the twelve thousand.
Okay.
What, in the form-based? What would be a site type B? We have, we have part A, C, D, B, and F.
Yeah, those are. So a B is found along Dexter and Arbor, those are found along corridors. And those are actually within the VR one and the VR two. And those are, that would be St. Joe's Church. So.
So that's good, okay.
So that's that, the site type F was actually on that slide where, where Bushes used to be in town. That, what that allows is, that allows multiple buildings to be on one site. So you could build in, if you could, if you could sustain the parking, you could build in the front. If you think about Ann Arbor, Celine Road and in Pittsfield Township, where the Myers is and how they built the, the buildings in front there, that is an example of actually this type of zoning with this type. the buildings in front there, that is an example of actually this type of zoning with this type of F. So it will allow multiple buildings and multiple uses within. So the idea is it helps with a large parking lot for things to be built, remain in the back, but something we built in the front.
So what's the logic behind the no curb cut?
The logic behind the no curb cuts is in order to keep it a walkable place. And currently you don't allow, you, you don't allow curb cuts on Main Street except in certain circumstances. And so to, and where we put that bold line, there aren't curb cuts generally.
Monument Park has a curb cut.
On, yes.
Well, I think of it as Monument Park, but maybe. Yeah, it's one of them.
So the idea is to minimize that and there's going to be non-conformities, but that you don't want any more. And especially with those smaller lot lines, you wouldn't want each one of those to be able to have a curb cut and whatnot. Okay, so, there are any more questions? If we could go back forward to where we were. There. Planning Commission had a number of recommendations when they made the motion to recommend this to you. And again, a lot of those were based on that input they heard from the public. So there's VR one and VR two.
Great question.
Yeah.
I'm still on the no curb cut thing.
Okay.
So like, you drew the black line on Jeffords.
Mm-hmm.
And then on Forest. When we approved the one fifty Jeffords to put underground parking, it requires a curb cut. If the business proposes underground parking in the way to park vehicles, were we not, are we not allowed to have a curb cut?
Um. So.
One fifty Jeffords is right there at the end of the school?
Yeah, I know. I see where it is and you're saying on the southern side, they have underground parking.
Yes, they do.
So if you feel like it's necessary, that line can be changed to a dotted line as well.
Well, no, I, do we have, do we have the ability, if it's a bold line, to ignore that?
If you, if it's a bold line and there's an existing curb cut, that existing curb cut saves. But if it's a bold line and.
Let's say it differently. Let's say the property right next to it. Which is a single story building. Let's say they want to build a multiple story building and they want to have underground parking. Are we allowed to allow underground parking because there's a bold line on the type, whatever that would be?
No.
Downtown A?
That would still be a curb cut. Because it's vehicular going in and out. And so they would have to build it off of the alley or off of that street that wraps around it.
The curb cut would have to be on the street, the downtown B Street.
Yes. So, any other questions? So what's proposed is VR one and VR two. VR one, VR one allows the same mixture of uses that you allow right now in your village residential and your, in your village commercial, which allows a few, allows some retail. The original proposal was to bring that all the way up to Iverness. And have the VR two, which is sheerly a residential zone, except for allowing the institute, allowing institutional uses and multi-family uses on larger lots, like where Encore Theater is or like where St. Joe's is. Then to, but what we heard from the, from the, from the public was that was too much and it really felt like that line should be back where it is, right where it is now. So that line for VR one was pushed back all the way to Central, which matches what you have now. So essentially the mixture of uses in the down, in, in the, in the village neighborhoods isn't changing. It's mirroring what it's saying, what, it's mirroring what's allowed now in terms of that. So that was the change. You go to the next one. On Second Street, it would have been proposed that the industrial building that's right across, that's near the park, that be changed to research and development. And that was based on some proposals we'd had before and what was in the master plan during the public hearing. It was pointed out that research and development adds a lot of uses that maybe wouldn't be appropriate there. And so the planning commission, we recommended to the planning commission to take it back to I1, which is what it is now, leave it there with the idea also that the going forward, that maybe Second Street would be a place for a mixed use corridor, but that would need its own master plan amendment. And looking at that corridor in more depth and that just hasn't been done at this point. So that was the reason for that.
So is the idea, don't change it now because we'll look at it later?
Yes, exactly, exactly. You go to the next one. Eighty thirty-three here on the street is an existing multiple family building. It was proposed to be VR two. And then that would make that use in that building completely non-conforming. So it was recommended to change that to village commercial, which does allow multiple family buildings and multiple family uses. And so that was, that was the change that was done in or because the planning commission felt that that building works there. There hasn't been problems.
Wait, what, what are you pointing to, the number ten? Yeah, or the other one.
No, but yeah, it was hard to prop this up. So this red.
Is that John Coles?
Yes.
So say again, Michelle, I don't know what you're focused on.
It was proposed to be VR two, which is a residential district, which wouldn't have allowed that multiple family dis, multiple family building or that multiple family use. So same, the proposal before you is that it would be village commercial, which would allow both a multiple family use and a multiple family building.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next one. Also, when we talked to, we heard from people in the central business district, the proposed central district that those houses that are not on the, the main street or on a main street or Baker Road, that having people wanting to maintain the ability to have a first floor residential use. And looking at it, so looking at allowing those only on the, the B streets. So that allowing that first floor use only on the B streets. Because again, that first floor use, people, if you think about when people come out for the first floor residential use, they only come out maybe two, three times a day. It's not like a retail shop or restaurant where people are coming and going, coming and going, coming and going. And you've always had a requirement to, on your, in your downtown that you have active uses and not residential uses on the first floor. So the compromise was to say, okay, you know, if we're going to have houses here, then let's allow those to have a first floor residential use, but they're pulled off of that main street corridor. So we're not gonna, we're not going to detract from the busyness and the vibrancy of that street. And we're going to allow more people to live near downtown. That would actually help also with people walking and being able to be near downtown.
So the Broad Street Alley where the old Antores could be?
Yes.
Across the street from that or you're saying that can have first floor residential?
If they wanted, yeah. If they built it, yeah. So maybe that, that would likely be, I don't think they would build a house there. They would likely be, build townhouses and a curtain building or something like that. We'd also, that would be hard to park. We need to probably look at that. So then that would happen at site plan review.
Is that consistent with our whole Warner Broadway walkable thing through town? But that seems inconsistent there for sure residential there. I'm just coming out loud, sorry.
If it was, if somebody wanted to redevelop that first floor use, they could. And it wouldn't necessarily be inconsistent with Warner, but it would require certain street scale improvements in order to make sure that there's safety.
Yeah.
But it's not necessarily inconsistent just because it's first floor residential on Warner Street.
Saying it the wrong way, but like we're you wouldn't want to allow it on Broad Street South of there.
Broad Street South.
Next to Thirty Fourth and Broad.
So you have to remember that those lots are the ones in front of the forest and not the ones in front of the law. Those lots of forest there are.
Yeah, I'm just confused by the part that's highlighted in the alley along Broad.
It didn't necessarily, I, I didn't mean to highlight the alley, I meant to highlight the personal. So, because it, it would be, and if it's only, it's only site type A and site type E where those uses, first floor uses would be allowed. So you wouldn't allow them on site type D or and because the one site type F fronts Jeffords, that wouldn't be allowed to have that same whichever is the more dominant street. Site type A is the heaviest street, I guess, with restrictions. If you have two or three streets siding it, the, the, one of the most restrictions rules.
I'll be coming back to this one.
Okay.
At some point.
Okay, and we can change the regulating maps as well. So if you felt like those weren't appropriate, then we could change the regulating maps or we could take the alley off and just not regulate that. And we could make an alley, we could make an alley type or a lower type or things like that. It's just the more we add, the kind of more complicated it gets. So. Go to the next one. There's accessory structures. Basically, these were moving from, to eliminate the backyard lot, lot coverage and your residential zoning districts. There's a twenty five percent lot coverage in the backyard. It was felt that that was unnecessary. There were different distances for accessory buildings in non-residential districts. So that, that should be ten to maintain the current zoning. And then maximum height was added for accessory buildings and public facilities. I1RD, that's the height of the principal building or the maximum building height for the zoning district, whichever is less. Any questions about those recommended, recommended changes? And why, where they were done?
So R1B would be the now R1?
Yes. The other ordinance that's before you tonight and that you need to public, public hearing on is the subdivisions ordinance. If you could go to the next slide, please. That is the layout and design of your streets, landscaping and property lines for future residential, commercial and industrial subdivisions. And most, this is only for new developments with multiple buildings and multiple land divisions. And it's likely only going to apply if the city expands by annexation. Also, what I emphasize is that if there are changes in subdivision ordinance and something that exists doesn't conform with what those regulations are, it's not the same as the zoning ordinance in terms of creating non-conformities. Once you divide the land and it's either subdivided as a flat or a site condo, it's done. And so you don't have the same issues in terms of when you're redoing, redoing the zoning ordinance and you're really concerned about creating non-conformities because you can impact, you can impact people's property values, what they can do with their property, their ability to refinance. It's not the same with the subdivisions ordinance. The subdivision ordinance is only going to apply when someone is taking a piece of land and subdividing it and creating a bunch of different blocks. If you go to the next one. The reason that, you know, the big changes here are to really implement your complete streets ordinance, make sure that there are requirements for sidewalks, bike pathways, bike lanes, trails, connections to them when it's possible to allow alleys. And then also to have street and block layouts that limit to two different types of land uses that you have. One, that's the old village and one that's more suburban in nature for, for residential. And then allowing also the same, keeping the same regulations you have for industrial and retail. And I know that there were some questions about cul-de-sac length. So that it was proposed to go from five hundred to two hundred? You already had that, okay, so, and. So.
It's in the thirty-one, baby?
Yeah. So basically, the two hundred is, it's proposed to be reduced, the cul-de-sac length, length, length is length, I'm sorry. It's proposed to go down from five hundred feet to two hundred feet. You have a number of two hundred foot cul-de-sacs in the city. Mostly they are in.
Karen Farms.
Karen Farms, and, thank you. And it was based on, we use South Bend, Indiana's zoning ordinance a lot as a base for pulling some other things. It's an award winning zoning ordinance. It was, they were really looking to, for it to make their city more walkable, but they had historic characteristics and then also suburban characteristics. So it was a good, it was a lot of times a touchstone to go to as well, as also used a lot of items from planning and zoning news and American planning association. So that was the reason for that. And the idea is to, again, the shorter cul-de-sac is more walkable and more sustainable in some ways because you're not making people drive as much and there's connections. But if people felt strongly that five hundred feet should be remained, what I would suggest is that you do the same thing that you have in, for block length and block perimeter is to say for your things that are master planned, those rep, for the village, no cul-de-sacs for things that are planned, master planned for for a more suburban nature or the industrial retail, that those could be five hundred feet.
What makes a longer cul-de-sac less walkable? Does it have to walk further?
That, that you have to walk further and that you don't necessarily, you, you get to work over and around and you're not connecting to something else. So they actually, there's research that shows that if you have more connections and you have choices in terms of where you're going, people walk more. That, so that's why that block structure is an enticing place for people to walk. Whereas a cul-de-sac not necessarily is, sometimes actually that curve, if it's a curved cul-de-sac and you can quite see what's at the end of the curve, that's enticing to us as human beings. But the around and back, not necessarily. Also, from a sustainability's point of view, you have less car travel where they have to turn around.
That's from in South Bend, Indiana?
Two hundred feet, South Bend, Indiana. Two hundred feet, South Bend, Indiana.
I have a question on maps. Um, I was trying to, in one of the slides was the proposed map that with all the colors, right?
Right.
And I was trying to find, because I knew I had seen it somewhere when we did our exercises and such and wash showed me in the planning commission packet. That there was that map with the key of what it, you know, the proposed, right? Would that map be included in the zoning ordinance document because I couldn't find it in?
The zoning map, yeah, you should have gotten a zoning map.
Um, the, the document that is the four hundred pages, would that eventually be in that?
It will, it was provided separately in your packet so that it didn't get lost. Can I just make it in planning, but we have it too.
Just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
That when it goes out this, so.
It'll, it'll go in, um.
I just got pretty sick in the bathroom, so I think I should probably go.
Okay.
Sorry.
Was it over this item?
Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, I'll put the whole link throughout and, and if it will come. I also have the same question about the map, it doesn't, article nine, that will be included.
So what are our next steps?
Your next steps are to call public hearing for, well. Call public hearing for subdivision ordinance. If you have any direction for, for us to make changes to the subdivision ordinance. Before you call that public hearing, we can leave them, we, we can turn them around this week. And then also, um. Again, you have a recommended zoning ordinance in front of you. You can take action soon or there might be, I recognize that it's late and it's a big decision. That, that's also a next step that you can take.
Okay, and then with regard to those, it's. All the next steps for that?
For the zoning ordinance, the next steps are for you to, um, either give us direction of what needs to change or, um, to make a motion to approve. There would be one change that I would ask for on that that we got today, which is that the state law dealing with, um. Family daycare homes has changed, so we need to update the definition of family daycare homes to allow the increased capacity.
So on the zoning ordinance.
Allowing two more.
No, I was just wondering, what, what was the change?
It allowed for family daycare homes to have an increased capacity of up to two more children. And since it. Under circumstances, so since the definition says no more than eight, we would need to change that, so it mirrors state law.
So one of our developments that's been proposed over the past eighteen months. Is the development at, of the Mill Creek Sports Site. And it's trapped in parking purgatory. How does, or how do the ordinance? Zoning ordinance revisions, do they give council the ability to waive parking?
So I'll tell you what I've told you before, and I don't mean that negatively, that didn't come out right. So, so the planning commission for your ordinance is authorized as the body to reduce the amount of parking. Or waive it completely. And then they recommend the site plan to council based on whatever changes they've made or allow. For parking, landscaping, et cetera. The ordinance doesn't. Enable council to make that, to make a different change.
The current.
The current ordinance.
Yeah, my question is.
Proposed one doesn't either, it stays with planning permission.
I'd like to discuss that we have the order to do that.
That's what your DDA is for. And remember, this is something you had.
That's gonna be your opinion of what it's for, but. I'd see planning commission as a recommending body.
It's a recommending, you're right, it's recommending.
In this case, what you've said to us is we don't have the ability to change that recommendation.
Correct.
Current ordinance is written.
Correct.
And I think that that.
You, you don't have the authority, but as I've said before. Council. I don't recommend it, council can not follow its ordinance. Because there isn't anybody coming to you. And the example I'll give you is, remember when Mr. Brower did the twenty eight, twenty, or twenty eight thirty building, the seventy percent flats. The recommendation.
It's twenty three what?
Twenty, twenty, Baker Road, when we did.
Actually for a street after.
I'm sorry. Um.
Katie's Alley.
Right. It was very clear through the whole process what the requirement was. And it was either applied by that or you'd need to get a vermin. And. Nothing happened right up to the end and, um. He made the request to council and council ultimately didn't follow the ordinance. I don't recommend you do that, but you have the ability not to follow.
Right, it would seem like it was more proper way would be just have the ability to follow ordinance and change it if you wanted to change it. Rather than just not follow it. So what I'm asking, what, what would the language look like? If council had the ability to waive that also?
Instead of it saying planning commission, it would say council.
Or both. It's either, right?
No, oh, no. What do you?
Do you? Yes, please.
So you can make it.
I don't know, I'm asking what would it?
Yeah, so I, what I was recommending, what is traditional. Um, is that planning, if it's the city council's decision, planning commission makes a recommendation. City council makes a, makes a decision.
Okay.
Um, so by state law, you do that for any changes to the ordinance. By this special land uses and site plan, you've decided as a community that you want to have. City council is the final deciding body.
Yeah.
Then the question I would pose back to you is there are. A number of things other than parking where planning commission can waive things. They can waive landscaping, they can waive parking, um, they can waive, so landscaping and parking, they both have waivers for. Um, I think there's some waivers for lighting. Um, and these are all things that go into a site. Um, and then a lot of these things happen at, a lot of this discussion happens at that first planning commission meeting. Where they come with a concept plan or preliminary plan. And then they revise it and then that preliminary plan usually goes back. Um, and then it goes, the preliminary plan does go to council and then it, it goes to you. But if you take those powers of waiver onto yourself. Just purely from a process point of view. Those items will not be hammered out by the time it gets to you. The developer will most likely try and hold all their cards and get everything they want and they will not listen to the planning commission. Because they know you hold the power and they will wait. And they will wait to see whether you listen to the planning commission or not, and then that's going to establish. So you, by taking that waiver, you're taking, you're going to take some power from the planning commission. Um, and also that ability for. The planning commission to deliver to you. Usually what's a ninety nine, ninety five percent done development in terms of design decisions and that.
Okay, Zach?
Yeah, so zoning enabling act allows some discretion on who's the approval for a number of things like site plans. The planning commission could be the legislative body, it could be staff.
Yes.
Or some weird combination, same thing for special land uses, it could be any of those bodies or entities. The most recent trends have been to take away from legislative body and to put it into administrative body where that's their thing. Where they're trained up, and I believe we have a very good planning commission, both with background of the staff or the members and their training. Um, with the advantage of they know what they're doing, they're less susceptible to political pressure to prove things. And that's, that's what they do in and out, that's their meetings. Was there any discussion at these meetings of taking some of those administrative approvals that are required by state law and placing them on the planning commission? Is that not discussed?
We discussed a site plan at the subcommittee level, making some things administrative and it was decided that, that this was not the time. That, that was too big of a change, um, especially when you were looking at the amount of changes we had in form-based codes. But traditionally, the form-based codes also comes more administrative, um. Administrative approvals. Also.
Um, so section five oh three is off street parking flexibility and application. It says deviations by a planning commission, and I'm assuming that's the section.
Are you doing the current or proposed?
Yes, you, the current ordinance allows the deviations and waivers, the new one does as well.
Right, so five oh three has deviations by planning commission. And then it also allows deviation by the zoning.
I'm sorry, yes, those are for, those are for, um. Currently any of the ordinance. Even something that's allowed to be reviewed administratively by staff. If there's a deviation for parking, it's gotta go back to planning commission. So this allows for staff to, I'll do a deviation for parking only on those. Items that staff already has authority to review and make a decision on.
Right, so if there's another section that's a deviation by city council and essentially state verdicts or wording that's involved in these items. That way, that will essentially allow changes to be made at councils, which are the ones that are saying can't be done right now because the ordinance doesn't.
Yeah, and, and there's also, um, if you look at section five oh five. To A, that allows the planning commission to waive part of off-street parking required in this section. When public parking, on-street parking, when it's the only view, parking lots for public use are located within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of a site. And it requires certain things to be submitted. Um, and then it gives standards for the planning commission to make that waiver. Um, and that you used to have some, right now your current ordinance, you have something that's much more stripped down, but just deals with that type of, um. Situation in village commercial only. And when it was discussed at the subcommittee level and then also the planning commission level, really people asked like, what's the difference if it's on Baker Road or if it's in village commercial? Um, if there's on-street parking there, why can't it be used? And so this was, this, this addition to this section were, um, was put in. So that's another thing that's proposed that would give the planning commission morally way to give a waiver.
It's a criteria.
Criteria.
Instead of being as subjective as it currently is.
So, and then also the. Parking requirements for restaurants have been reduced in this, just in general. Um, and also kind of, there, there was a lot of reductions in the requirements for parking. Because it was generally felt that we were overparking and requiring too much and giving a lot of weight and looking at a lot of different waivers. Um, so. The only circumstance where I feel like. I would recommend as your planning consultant for you to have that ability as council. To look at the parking is, I think, with a special land use. Because then that has an extra layer of scrutiny, you have people within three hundred feet. Um, and then I would ask that also that you be looking at or using those. The same standards that are set out here for planning commission. Um, I think if you have that ability with every single site plan to waive parking. It, we, there will be a level of dysfunction in terms of getting site plans through the process.
Okay, so then why not make this central business district boundary? Across Mill Creek to include Mill Creek towards personal.
Um, that was examined in the master plan, um, and there were several reasons. One, um, it's isolated from the pedestrian infrastructure because you have to cross the bridge and there's only one place. Two, it's out of the TIF district for the DDA and that TIF district will likely never be expanded. Um, so within the DDA, all those areas benefit from the TIF financing and the city provides the parking. Um, then also, um, I think the water infrastructure was another thing.
Right.
That was a limiting factor because without city water there, it's only on a well, it's only going to be one story. It's not going to be two or three stories, which is what you want your downtown to be. Um, and so those were the reasons that that was not put into the central business district.
Wow.
There's always going, we can't make every single applicant that comes through happy one hundred percent of the time. The ordinance, we do the best to set forth. The way to implement the vision that collectively, collectively the community has for preserving the character of Dexter. Excuse me, um. What is, let me ask this, Sean, what, oh, council, not just Sean. What, what is the harm if an applicant doesn't like? The, a waiver planning commission has given, what is the harm in requiring that applicant then to go to the CVA? Because that's what normally would happen if. Planning wasn't going to either make a waiver of something that they're allowed to do. Or they make a recommendation on a site plan or special, a site plan or special use. Where an applicant doesn't like the decision that's being recommended.
Well, my first comment is, I don't necessarily think that the central business district has to align with the downtown development authority boundary. Okay, I don't know where that tie is because that doesn't play out. It's not a one part of the district, but not the rest. The district goes all the way down to Bushes.
Right.
Okay, so that is a false perception that those have to align. Are we, are we drawing in the central business district boundary around thirty forty five Broad?
Yes.
So why are we doing that?
So that it gets the high density that is in the vision range, you know?
It doesn't always, wouldn't if it wasn't in it?
Correct, and they'd have to provide all parking on site. That reduces the ability to.
And not my experience, most of these tough sites end up on BOD anyway and aren't in subdivision. Am I incorrect in thinking that?
That was recommended in this particular case.
What was recommended?
The Mill Creek Brewery of PV was recommended. And the applicant chose not to take that route.
Well, it just seems like that we have a property that has very unique requirements on how they're kind of put together the project. And I think we're benefiting from that project rather than making a piece of land that hosts construction sites.
Yeah, development on the property would be a benefit to the city as well as to the proposition.
I think we should be figuring out how to help do that. I don't see that in there yet. So other than the reduction of restaurant spaces, whatever, it's still used on the same issue. In my opinion. And it just seems like the, for, for all the dollars associated with those spaces that we're charging. The tax revenue from the property, the, the ability to have another restaurant downtown, people walk everywhere, anywhere. Nobody knows there's a line at the river between central business district and village commercial or whatever it is out there. That's our line. That's, you know, it's arbitrary. Sorry.
Yeah, just very briefly, I mean, just looking at the map. It's the only paint that's over there. Doesn't seem like a stretch to extend red, which is C V D. Um, other areas have, you know, there's some isolated paint, but that's because, you know, maybe that's wrong for it. And with, otherwise, I don't know, I think it's strange to me if I can see a color that's cut out on itself. And, and again, in the master plan, we talked about it, we talked about extending it to central business district. And there were the factors that we talked about. And I agree with you that the TIF extends all the way down to Baker and other, and other places. It's not just limited to the downtown. But you can't take those TIF dollars and then spend them in something that's not within the TIF. Um, so that was a factor is that.
But there were city dollars spent within the DDA district that produced parking too that wasn't generated by the TIF.
Right, no, so it's a combination. So, and the planning commission talked about that. They, they talked about where it was located and they talked about the fact that, so it was cut off by the river, that it has, it had contamination on it, that it, it, it doesn't have the water infrastructure to go two, three stories up. Those were the reasons. Now, city council can make a different, you're the ones who approve, you can make a different decision. What I hesitate, wherever, I would not want you to make big policy decisions based on one site because there may be unintended consequences for your parking. And I will just want to stipulate that a P U D was offered to the applicant. We talked about a conditional rezoning, we had talked about, um, uh, we had talked about parking for payment and move. There was a lot of debate, the planning commission involved, and the planning commission multiple times has made determinations that they felt this site in particular should be village commercial. And they, as proposed by the applicant, they felt that there wasn't enough parking there. The part, the applicant also has some choices that could decrease their parking spaces. They can decrease their footprint size. Um, I think that there's some changes here in the required parking that will help them. Um, and then also there's, it's expanded in order to look at to expand the, the area that they're allowed to look at for parking um, on-street and, and whatnot is one thousand three hundred twenty feet instead of, I think, three hundred feet in the current. Sorry.
Okay, Zach? I, I just wanted to put, so one of the challenges when planning gets to legislative bodies is we tend to look closer to our good than where the lights are off in the distance. Um, so, so the potential unintended consequences of this would be C V D, for example, I just want to clarify for folks. If it were in the merchant, central business district, it would have minimum height of two stories, is that correct?
Correct.
So that would be cost prohibitive because they would have to sprinkle that building.
Yes, that's why.
So they would have to pay money for sprinklers and for bigger well and for water stores instead of.
They wouldn't be able to do it in the world, they'd have to run the.
They'd have to pay to bring that over, or they would have to get a variance to not build a two-story building, which the practical difficulty of that would be pretty challenging since they knew what the requirements were when it was resolved to that. And the property would be usable. Um, I would also offer that compared to the rest of the C V D, where there's parking, maybe not as much as folks want, but there's parking ten feet from most doors. I cannot imagine for me anytime in the next hundred years when there's going to be more than one parking spot on the street in front of this building. Um, so that's a very different character. And folks may be comfortable walking the two hundred feet from the intersection across the bridge to that, but I don't, it's very different character. That's all.
Done. So a couple of questions, is there wh- what other ways would there be to give flexibility in the, like, right now, you, you mentioned that the, the parking is going to be reduced under the new. Do you have any idea what the parking is going to be on that particular lot?
Their current deficiency is forty-three spaces, if I remember correctly.
Forty-four versus eighty-seven.
Yeah, so the deficiency is forty-three.
Thirty-three. Their deficiency under this new, if I remember correctly, is thirty spaces.
What was the conditional rezoning proposal?
They were proposing to conditionally rezonate to central business district. Um, originally, they came with a proposal for just a straight rezoning to central business district. Um, that's not in keeping with the future land use map. Um, in the current master plan, so based on a pre-application meeting where that information was shared with them. Um, they went back and did a conditional rezoning, had a conditional rezoning application. Um, at that point, I think, Michelle, it was that the outdoor recreation use, so.
When they, when we counseled them against the great, the straight reason, they wanted to know what were their actions. We told them P U D is your most effective action. Um, uh. We also said there was an additional rezoning. It's a, it's a very labor-intensive lift for an applicant, and if you don't know how to do it, that's going to be difficult, but based on what they were proposing at that time, that was another option. When they submitted, they added a recreational use, an outdoor recreational use. That was the bike rental. That's not a use that's currently allowed in the central business district.
Isn't it like repair shop or something like that?
Bike repair is different from bike rental.
I assume both.
I'm sorry?
I assume both.
Assume both.
But what's the logic behind that? Why wouldn't a recreational use go out in the central business district?
You have to remember when we instituted the outdoor recreation use in the village commercial district was when that particular property came in for redevelopment as a canoe and kayak livery with a little outdoor beer garden.
That wasn't my question. But, okay.
That's why, we, we only did it for that area. It wasn't looked at as being needed in the central business district.
That's why we should be looking broader than. And then, and some of this is we created, we should have some flexibility, there's nothing objectionable to anybody about a recreational use. I ask.
No, nobody said there, so, John, nobody said there's anything objectionable about recreational. It's what was in the ordinance.
I know, but we have an opportunity to change it. Isn't that what we're talking about? You.
The Indian perspective, the townships, let them deal with it.
Look, we, we need, we need those kind of parcels developed.
We do need those kinds of parcels developed, but.
Yeah, you should, you should.
Part of the, part of the thing is, is so to the point made, planning is not a political body, they're insulated from that, they're appointed. They're also insulated from that. They don't have to deal with that feedback as much. To Jane's point earlier about the, the second street with the storage unit there, that, that ended up getting turned around.
Mm-hmm.
The, this is not the first time that we've dealt like this, right? This is not the first time we've had discussion about parking. It's not the first time we've had a discussion about appropriateness of the parking. Um, we did it when we went through Bushes, we did it when we did a lot of the uses over there when they're doing, that it was, there was too much. And we've had sites to revamp parking instead of putting in the, so it, it's not just this one site, but this one site happens to be the, you know, on the map right now. This is the one that's front and center of ours. So there, we need something better. I mean, I understand what you're saying about, we're just not going to get it done in planning, we're just going to go to council. I frankly don't know a better way to do it than that, because if a restaurant says, I only can do forty-four spaces and that's enough for me, I mean, you know, we can't have it both ways. We can't say you're going to use up all the parking in downtown and then turn around and say people aren't going to walk that far. So you're not going to count those spaces. I mean, and the thing is, those parking spots downtown are not just for the people that are there. It's not like, I'll set up a beer rato and I don't have to do anything, now these parking spots are mine, nobody else can use them. Build the load, build the wall, nobody else can excuse them, that's it. We need a better answer. We need more flexibility. We are, we need, as a town, have a problem. We are not, we don't have enough desks. Chuck Vanderbeek in twenty years ago said, we need to get to critical dense, we need to get to enough places here so that when people come down town, they say, ah, it's too busy over there, I can order here. We don't happen, this is a great opportunity to do nothing else in the province. So we need. Yes, what we gotta do, and the, the only default that I keep on coming back to is we just don't think the ordinance, it's the same thing, it says a city council can do the aviation, but the same thing in there. And I know you don't like it, and I know it leads to other factors and stuff, but it doesn't matter to me at this point because I don't have another solution. Please, tell me what the other solution is.
Your ordinance is the flexibility within that ordinance currently, as it pertains to parking, is quite generous. I'd kill for this in Northville, where we ad nauseam go parking. What you have to look at beyond just this one site. If you, if you want, so this is, this would be the step that I would suggest that you consider. If you don't like the parking, um, as it is currently in the recommended ordinance, send it back to planning commission with clear direction on what you would like them to look at. Do you want to do a minimum parking in the central business district and U B C district? Do you want to, um, um, take the, take the, um, take the authority away from planning to reduce away parking and just give it to city council?
You can.
That was my suggestion.
On section five oh five, the on-street parking and public parking, municipal parking, you can make that a city council decision and leave all the other waivers to planning commission. We, we talked about at the subcommittee level and at the funding commission level, waiving all parking for village commercial. We, they talked about it, they decided not to. So those are, those are options. Um, you know, Michelle is correct in that the right, per planning practice, the right process is for you to send this back to the planning commission and have them um, come up with solutions and make a recommendation to you. Um. And I think that will be a lively discussion at that level. Um.
Alternatively, because of what Megan just brought up, um, the other thing you can do is, is ask for a workshop to talk over this issue from a policy perspective, so that planning can then send you a ordinance with the, with these standards that meet that policy direction that you want to go.
I think that quite frankly is the best suggestion that's come forward. And we can write up some of these suggestions that you've had and start short conversation.
Well, pick it over, I mean, this is just a discussion, so. You could also do a Ron Swanson overlay district where they get a permit and get it where they want. A lot of parks in the fantasy apparently.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen that.
I haven't seen it.
He's a direct in parks and recreation.
Yes.
Indiana, and when he goes to parks doing something, he said, I need to see.
Oh, what's the focus on Indiana? I don't understand.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay.
So is there any direction for us in terms of changing subdivisions ordinance for, when you're looking at a public hearing? Or, or anything to bring back to the planning commission that they're meeting on Monday?
Not intended for tonight, though. Anything you can tell about the discussion?
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want, what?
It's gonna be an item again. So I don't have any. Time decision after this time. Tom?
I'm running out of steam. I hope they have to wait for public participation. I want to, yeah, I think a couple of comments on the expand review and section.
You should, Ken?
Thank you.
Sure. You don't mind me putting them under the higher range?
And I'm making your number range.
Yeah.
So our families of the earth or T D R, that's our neighborhood. And, and I would note that, um, you know, interest in and concern about the intersection isn't just school matter. It's also a matter for the people who live in that area. And what applies to that other section applies to the intersection of several hundred feet up the road, again, all evening line as well. If they behave or if it's the same way, um, and that crossing that road, extra number at evil location. Feels like taking your life in your hands every time you do it. And so I, I would encourage you to address both intersections at the same time. You know, we have invited our new community people into our, into our city with the Avalon housing. And I see those folks walking down the street headed to Bushes. They're crossing that road quite frequently, along with other people who cross that road. And, um, I hope that solutions that you identify are applied to both intersections. I know that there are special, uh, you know, considerations with Mill Creek School, but frankly, there's an enormous amount of traffic at the other intersection as well in the morning for cars who have dropped their kids off at the schools that are up the street there on Van Huyghe. So, um, it's not just the one intersection. I mean, the super low hanging fruit here is to change the timing when we cross walk lights so that they turn green a couple of seconds before the traffic lights do. We've talked about it, I've mentioned it for years, or at least the first time was a few years ago and nothing's ever changed there. Um, that would help a lot, but basically people don't slow down until they get to the top of the hill or they're coming from the end of the direction. They speed like, they're like, it's just an annoyance and they want to get farther on. So solutions are going to, you know, more aggressive consideration by hiring slower cars. Make that whole area safer for pedestrians, it's not just that.
Thank you for that.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for waiting. Okay, we're on, uh, the. Okay, we're on the booth six, discussion on the vice and tenet committee.
So a little while back, um, your culture heritage committee came to council with a recommendation that ECH be permitted to start reaching out to other community organizations to start um, building structure around, um, uh, the bicentennial, which is in twenty twenty four, and start organizing the organizations um, to start figuring out what other organizations we're going to do with vice and title and start to try, start to try and play coordinator um, with, with those other organizations. Uh, the bicentennial committee has, um, itself developed more structure and has started to develop needs. Although they, they, the bicentennial group has representatives from the Earth Culture Heritage Committee. It was never really the council had never voted to appoint members to a formal committee. So it's been serving more as like a subcommittee of ECH in certain ways, but, um, without the formalities or, um, staff liaison support that, for example, ECH enjoys. Um, but, uh, the bicentennial, the, as desert to develop needs and, uh, we wanted to invite um, representatives from the bicentennial committee and the two that I see in the audience are also representatives of the Earth Culture Heritage Committee. Um, and ask them to provide that deep counsel on what's going on and what's the, what the needs are. And the council has an opportunity to start, um, grappling wrestling with, um, what, what twenty twenty four will look like for the city. Cheryl, right?
Oh, yeah, I guess I entertain questions from, uh, council on what, uh, they want to be brought up speed on. And I didn't want to take up a lot of time because it's late, so I want to history to how we can be where we're at, or if we just want to figure out, um, basically how we want to move forward, so I'll leave that up to you.
Go ahead, Zach.
I have a kind of a general question. What's the ask of council here? What's the, the goal coming out of here from council for the vision of policy?
So I know that the bicentennial committee has asked for some level of funding. I think the most immediate need is, um, uh, there are some mayors, I believe, that, um, were indicated that there was planning to go out in January or February. And so there, there is some, some level of funding need. Um, now that the, the city is permitted to grant funding for the purposes of, of celebrating the bicentennial or vice at stake. Uh, which is unique compared to other events or, um, other groups for free that like Dexter Day is, um, not able to, to give funding towards, towards that organization because it doesn't fall within the specific criteria of what St. Law allows us to give money for.
So I thought I just want to clarify that it's not the ACH bicentennial, it's the other one.
So, so ECH has its own desires for what it wants to do to celebrate the bicentennial. This is basically the subcommittee, the subcommittees ask of council, um, for additional or other funding.
Our, our subcommittee or subcommittee created on its own.
Hold on, yeah, that's what I'm talking about that. Hold on, let me mess them up.
With Zach, we, this is a very, very good point. We, we would like to know how to proceed organizationally. Originally, you know, brought by Sam and Cheryl. Cheryl's been spearheading it, um, long time member of the community and has done tremendous amount of work towards this. And back in like January twenty one, I believe, uh, we kind of, Sam and Cheryl brought the idea together that we should do something for the bicentennial. And we all felt it was a good fit with the ECH committee. Um, and we kind of went through a little process, um, you know, I believe it was March of twenty one that it was brought to council. Took for that opportunity with ACH. And I think a meeting or two of discussion after that, Sam got appointed to council. So we lost her as our, um, as our chair. And, um, we didn't have any council representation for a year really after that. And, um, based on discussions at the ECH, you know, any level, we felt that, um, the direction with, uh, you know, Justin being interim, not fully on orders. The city manager yet, and then also not having an assistant and all that process took a lot of time. Um, what we determined was there wasn't really a lot of room, uh, for staff involvement to, to launch a whole new committee. And it was trying to advise that, uh, we take, you know, as, as we know all these events that, for example, all, all on staff, uh, you know, whatever the committee can't handle. We're kind of a unicorn in the ECH committee in that respect that we're really the only ones put on these events. And it's a lot of your office sleeves and hands on stuff that most of the other commissions aren't, aren't attacked with. So, uh, it was all we could do to just pull off Planar Festival and handle, you know, temporary sculpture displays and all of that. Because it's so much work for us, you know, small by try to handle. And, uh, we felt there's no way that we could tackle the bicentennial at the same time. It was just impossible. So, um, plus under the constraints, and I, and I don't mean excited, we look to Zach primarily to of proper following of Robert's order, which we're all familiar with. The communication aspects of that, we felt a whole process of, of Sean or the council having to interview specific committee members for this, get them on board. And that process would take forever and we needed to get going right away. Um, so the lack of, of some of those support things that we had, we kind of felt, and that's where we diverged. From original goal was, gosh, we really want the city behind us. We, we want to have this in, in, you know, involvement with them. But the direction and support at the time wasn't there. And so we decided, hey, maybe, maybe we can have some representation from the ACH. But we got to get going in a different manner to at least get this thing, uh, around and launched. And so been working very hard at that and Cheryl chairs that bicentennial committee. Um, and, and I'm on that as well, but, um, that's kind of a little bit of the history on how, how we got to where we are now. Um, and, and the reasons for some of those decisions that the ACH have made. So, yeah, we, we just hope they'll handle, we never have a fun air festival like here. The, uh, you know, have trouble coming up with other events to do because of just Planar. We never pull off like the vice and plenty of them. So that's how we got there, um, just so everybody's aware. And, uh, but now we've come, I've got a lot of groundwork under our belt and, and developed a lot of things. A little bit more of a structure, recruited a lot of community members to help out, they want to be involved. Um, all the different kinds of groups are on town, usually so specific. But now we are at a point where we're like, well, we do need some funding. And Brad, you know, uh, Sean and I talked about it a little bit, you know, the whole ideal is to be partners with, uh, with the city in some fashion. So how, how can we make that happen? You know, if we can make this a, a subcommittee, an official subcommittee of the ACH, do we have to, you know, can we only have a couple of members so we don't, you know, we have memberships or members that have been vacant, um, and all under maybe three or four and we're already at forum. Um, you know, and it causes communication issues. Can we treat it like Planar, so to speak, and have, uh, it led by ACH to have as many community member involvement on the subcommittee? How should we best handle this? Um, that's, that's what we're looking for structurally in addition to, you know, some funding opportunities. So I, that's, that's kind of where we're at. I want to nail down how we should be structurally and how we should report to you and, and what you're looking out of the ACH and vice and panel committee to issue.
Well, what I passed out to council was what we approved back in March, or I think we approved back in March. March of twenty twenty one. I assume you've seen this. So, you know, my, my view of this when we approved it was that we knew staff was challenged, like you illustrated for handling that. You know, it gets a lot to pull off stuff. I was assuming that ACH would have a subcommittee of their members that would then reach out to other groups and, and coordinate activities. And it sounds like there's been a lot of that going on and I appreciate that. The things I've read here sound very good for the most part, I think. I don't think the last bullet that says ACH will inform the city council that every step on planning and before major decisions has been followed. I don't know of another report since we started meeting where we've gotten much feedback on things. I mean, I know there's a date, been a date fixed. So I think that should have been done as a presentation here, the reasons why. You know, the logo looks great, but I think I would like to bet that they don't know that we're doing that before we printed up t-shirts and, and such. Um, I fully expected that we would be budgeting dollars through the ACH committee to help do these things. I don't know what they necessarily are. But I was thinking that you guys would be coming to us and saying, hey, we've got with our men, these six, these eight groups. Here are the activities they're bringing, here are the activities we want, here's what we think we need to do to market this or whatever it says in here, it says ACH will do the overall marketing and advertising. So if you've got a projection of the analysis or cost for things, I'd like to know that, but, you know, in terms of the meeting and the structure, frankly, you could just post, we could just advertise regular meetings, you could create another meeting. Let's call it a ACH subcommittee meeting. I don't know that, and you're not voting on anything. That's a question, are, are you voting on anything? I mean, you don't, you, you know, you're a recommending body, right? And you're coordinating. So if, if, if the recommendation is that we need to spend money or budget money for advertising, my expectation is that the ACH report to council would say, hey, we need to set aside $10,000 to do this or whatever it is. And then we can budget for that, just like you would if you were going to say, hey, we want to do spores, spores event and we need 2,000 to do that.
Right, well, we have a set, you know, amount for, for general things already in the budget for ACH.
I know, this would be specific to the vice activity, whatever those are, whether they're coordinating costs or they're otherwise. And, and I appreciate that you and Cheryl have time to interact on it for me. Like this, because Justin and Josh, while they might be of help to you, and I think they've been attending some of those meetings. It's going to take more than them to pull them off. What?
If we were to have a function as a sub, subcommittee of ACH, I have a couple of questions. Would there need to be a staff person?
If they say that only, I mean, if, if they're informing us along the way or informing the ACH at, at the regular meetings, staff ought to be able to determine when they're in need of help and they could let us know that.
Okay, and then my second question is, I mean, I feel like it would be fairly easy to just appoint the entire body of what they've already put together as the bicentennial, this bicentennial committee, as that ACH subcommittee, put it on the consent agenda, they're already doing the work. I mean, I don't, I would hope nobody here would object to people who've already put in all this work being appointed to a subcommittee like that.
Yeah, no, I
Or would that even be necessary?
I don't know what's, I mean, they're not voting or taking action on anything. I don't know what, I don't know what the formality of the committee needs to be. I don't, I guess I don't understand that.
So as long as they're reporting.
There's no problem with people getting together and talking about how to do something. I just think that, you know, the, the part that can still, there's more, how many people on ACH, ten or eleven? So, you know, if, if more than six of them want to participate, we have to host a meeting. And, and to me, they can do that. They can either call a special meeting if they know when they are, or they can set it ready at the time and advertise them. But I don't
No, and I would think that if we were able to host a special meeting and advertise them, it might help them out. It might get people to come volunteer or have a forum to talk to these other people to centralize time. I don't know, this is just me as way, you know, I was in this process at the very, very beginning when we were just thinking about this, so.
I'm just saying, it seems like we, we could, you could set a regular meeting time per month. And mostly, I mean, that's when they need to jump it from different committee members or committee organizers, that's their
And I imagine they're already doing something like that, it sounds like. Otherwise, you guys wouldn't have all this work, this output, right?
But just not hosting meetings.
Right, and not, I mean, and reporting that to us now, but you're wanting more regular intervals is what you're saying.
I'm, the, the direction that was provided to ACH was to do reports. Yeah, I'm just looking to figure out how do we get regular feedback? How do we know when they're meeting? How do we know what comes out of that meeting?
So one, so my understanding is one of the concerns we had was
I'm sorry, Cheryl, can you stand up? I can't see you, thank you. Yeah, no, just this is right in front of me.
Um, is that we were concerned about not being able to communicate as often as we wanted to or as frequently or whatever we need because four people, more than four people, maybe five, depending on how many people we have in ACHC, um, would make a forum. And we didn't want to run into that problem because we need to meet much more than once a month. We have subcommittees of bicentennial because there's so much to be done. And so we were concerned, we would love to be a part of the city, um, as a bicentennial.
See, I think you are a part of the city, we created this.
Well, and
I don't know, but it didn't happen.
Direction to
Well, but that's because that, from my perspective, that's because I don't think we're getting communication of, with you on a regular basis.
We talked about that as well because every month at the ACH meeting, we present a, a report. We talked about, we presented our logo, we've talked about our meetings, we've talked about where we stand. Every month we take a report to ACHC. So I'm not sure why that has gotten here. Is maybe we should be the bicentennial, maybe we should be running that board? That's something that's unfair. So, you know, I apologize for, you know.
I think if we just corrected that, it would go a long way towards being able to provide the, the answers to the questions we have.
And to, to that end, could we not just put, we have this on every agenda, boards, commissions, and other reports. Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, first of all, it starts with the May. And we just put the bicentennial report from ACH in the cabinet every time?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, to, to, to your point, I mean, well, like I said, one, you're talking about about consistency and, and, and regular, regularity, regularness of the meetings. I mean, it, it, it could help to have a member of staff there serving as, as a liaison. And the meaning of means could be healthier and you could post them once or twice a month or frequently. The, 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 the meetings are for the, the main group, not the, you know, subcommittees of the, some committees. But that, that, that was, that was my concern was, was getting appropriate structure around the bicentennial communication that they're successful. And make sure that council's getting what, what it needs. And I think part of that is, is maybe getting staff more involved.
Yeah, but, but as a coordinating committee, you don't need to have like one number of every group that is trying to do an activity on the committee. It's unnecessary, you just need to be able to know who you're talking to about that activity, right? It's unnecessary. You just need to be able to know who you're talking to about that activity, right? I mean, how many, how many members do you have on this committee? Or the subcommittees? I mean, I mean, there's the picture that I saw on the September or whatever ACH packet had 15 people.
We have 14 on the committee and two student reps make 16.
I mean, does that need to be the subcommittee size in order to facilitate, get the subcommittee less with? People coming as needed to the subcommittee to tell them what they're doing?
So so far, what we've done is people we have now is. Even not enough. So we're looking at for the subcommittee that we're talking about is having people on the. Committee, the bicentennial committee, bring friends and volunteers to each one of the different subcommittees so that we can get. Um, more bodies involved.
I hear you, but I'm not trying to argue about it. That doesn't, that doesn't. The subcommittee is just a, from my perspective, the subcommittee is just somebody that is just a group that's reporting back through ACH. To what's going on. Does council see it as more than that?
So I think what actually. Kind of picked this for me in our um, November meeting of ACH and. Kind of put this on my radar. First of all, thank you both of you for staying this late to control this agenda. I really, I appreciate it. Um, was that. Originally on this that we approved as council or the council approved at that time. Was on the other side of it. Uh, ACH would be that coordinating group. The work that has evolved right now with bicentennial committee is very different than. What this document as a charge to ACH was, right? You ask whether there are decisions made. Well, in terms of like, there are decisions that have been made, right? The the logo has been made, for example, t-shirts were made out of it. There are. A variety of things in in that sense that are decisions that the bicentennial committee has made. So, and there are sort of a done thing, right? Um, in in their view. So in in that sense, there is. Some clarification is needed of whether. We are going back to this. Or whether something. In between is sort of created and we want to to have that in between because right now. The work that has evolved for the bicentennial committee. Is not this. Is not the coordination of ACH would coordinate. The goal was that ACH would do the marketing, ACH would um, do the coordination, different groups. Would come. As part of representation in in this. In these meetings, so not as a committee, but as participating organizations or individuals in the community. To come to these meetings and say, okay, I'm, you know, Chamber is doing a parade and. ACH is doing paint dexter with the theme of bicentennial, but we all would know through ACH. That these were the things that were do happening. So Dexter Days wouldn't put the parade at the same day of. Chamber, I'm making this up, right? So in that sense, we would have been the calendar holder of, okay, these are the things that are happening. Would be the coordinator and then the advertisement and marketing of it would go through the city, through ACH. But that has changed, right? In some sense, in in a lot of sense, the bicentennial committee is now. It it functions as a standalone. Committee of people and organizations. With decisions have been made, you were talking about fundraising, things that as as the body themselves. So I think for me is that. To have a clarification, and I think that was my my thing as council representative on ACH on. First week of November was that. I could not pinpoint where where we are. So um. That's probably what is the main thing of, and and then in terms of budget, I'm sorry, in terms of budget, but we had. Put approved budget. To support that coordination and marketing role of ACH. And that would have then been things that would be recommended and say, okay, these are the things we are doing in that capacity, ACH is doing in that capacity. And here is the budget for it. So I just wanted some clarification of. How to, if there is funding, how is that distributed through ACH? How is that distributed? If it's given to bicentennial and all of that prompted, sort of.
I mean, to me, the funding is the easiest part. It's just the line item. And anything gets coded that supplies, we just have to know what the line item is. And but they're not cutting checks. They don't own a checkbook. A check cut, the city would approve it as part of the normal bills and payroll process. If there's an expenditure of money. Listen, that that's, that part's easy to me.
So.
No, no different than smores and things or planer or whatever else.
I think the difference um, comes in with with the paraphernalia, the the different things for the bicentennial.
Be more specific than.
T-shirts, uh, hats, um, uh, you know. Things that are memorable that people can buy to to commemorate the bicentennial. And um, under ACH. We don't sell things. I mean, you know, plenty of areas of different means. I'm not quite sure how we manage to sell the paintings. There's gotta be something that we do there. But we typically don't, you know, we aren't in business to sell and make money. Where the bicentennial committee was looking at selling and making money to be able to fund some of the things that are coming up. They're outside of marketing and.
So I say thank you. Uh, if you're gonna make 2206 of the packet, there's 14, I don't know, it's 14 or more people who clearly are energized by this. And realize that. Infrastructure was lacking for a variety of reasons and. You kept moving forward and I think that's tremendous credit to you and I appreciate that. So the last thing I'm gonna do at this point is to try to undo or, and I'm not thinking anybody else is trying to do this. I just want to state my own intentions. They don't want to undo what you've done. You. Worked together, you found a structure that that's working for you, this subcommittee of subcommittee type thing. It allows me to move forward and I really appreciate that. So from from my perspective, what it seems like. Maybe the the gap is um. I don't know if there's a way that ACH can just formally, you know, create you at the subcommittee, you know, that. As its authority to create its subcommittees, if that just needs to be formalized, if we're just trying to like correct some process things, maybe ACH just. Creates a subcommittee and then you continue as you've been doing, but it's just an action you take to formalize this process. And then if you publicize your meetings, just if we need to be on the open up with public meetings, just making sure that people know when they're happening. And then I think I, you know, Sanam, I think you just stepped back into this role for ACH, right? Get done as director?
Uh, yes, like a couple months ago, two, three months ago.
Right. So then I would think, you know, we do have a placeholder in our agenda. But I think then there should just be regular updates from you in that regard. And if it needs to be something more detailed, where you guys would need to come, but. You're already having all these other meetings. I don't necessarily need care from you and having council meeting, what's happening, if you can hear. Yes, and um, and then in terms of funding, if there's a proposal that you can do together that you. As your subcommittee to ACH, you figure out what dollar amount you need with some general idea, you submit that to ACH. ACH then recommends to council. I don't feel like I need to approve every single line item of an expenditure. So if there's just a total dollar amount. Again, you've demonstrated that you have the energy enthusiasm and fine with the things you've done. Um, I don't want it in the way of that. So if, but if we just need to correct some formalizing things, then fine doing that. But I don't want to be an obstacle to moving forward. Wow. Sorry if it wasn't clear, but that's pretty much what I was suggesting, all of what you just said. Except for, I was not suggesting you ask Tom and give us verbal reports, just a written report in the packet every time it's signed. And then she can follow up on anything that's missed. Or that needs flushing out.
Yeah, and and for me was that we just need to clarify this of all that has happened. For everybody to be on the same page. And I I felt that we were not all on the same page. Um, and that that was my fault.
So Justin, are we allowed to sell a t-shirt? What's that? Three days after.
Well, yeah, yeah, that 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 doesn't sell, uh, sell, uh. Personal property.
I know there's a lightbulb for fun air for us to be able to sell, but.
Well, yeah, and and technically we're not really just on selling the paintings. It's the artist selling the paintings. Well, that is an intermediary, but I I I'd have to talk to Murray and. Make sure that that's.
Well, why don't you look into that question? That's the kind of question I wish, you know, to develop from the group. Zach?
Yeah, so thank you both for both waiting here tonight and for working on arts, culture, heritage and doing this. I'm sorry that we don't have your ACH full of people. That's a failure of this body. Uh, I also want to extend an invitation. If you ever feel you don't have the resources and you're not comfortable, give me a call. What it seems like. Is that this is, this group is much bigger than the ACH and it feels weird tucking it underneath it. My experience, I, my village where I grew up had a sesquicentennial when I was there. And the thing that's different from these, from an annual thing like planer, Dexter Days or Apple Days. Is you don't have an established infrastructure, social structure of, here's the person who called for this parade, here's the person who does this, here's. You have to create it all from scratch, um, which is much bigger than a, an annual thing or a semi-annual thing. It seems like kind of the ask is for staff resources and and other money resources. I'd be more comfortable giving money even though the. State says we can to bicentennial, sesquicentennial, if it were formally a part of the city as a committee. Um, otherwise, there's questions about is it being on the same level as we do with us and the other places we give it to. So I would be in support of this bicentennial being just its own separate ad hoc committee that will stand up for the next two years. That's my piece. Thank you.
So Cheryl, if the. Why can't the historical society sell their t-shirts? If you need, you need money to pay for activities you want the city to do or the ACH to do, I think you should be asking us. For those dollars that we budget for those dollars. I will put the paraphernalia on another historical group, give them a chance to make the money. That way, if they think there's a moneymaker.
We did talk to the historical society about that and they are not able to with their grants and the amount of money they have coming in and going out. There was some kind of attitude challenge that they were not. Um, able to assist. Um, we talked to the Rotary. They also were not able to talk to the Chamber and they, they said, yes, they would. Um, be looking into that, but they had some tax issues they had to straighten out with the government before they could do that. So. Um, those were all investigations because we still didn't quite understand if we were part of the city or if we were not part of the city. Um, if we did have our own committee, then we have to abide by Robert's rule of orders, quorum and all of that. Which would be problematic. So.
Well, I'd like to get the question answered by Will and John. Is there a way we can do that or not?
Yes, the thought there was that we would. Sell paraphernalia to make money to support other things for the bicentennial and also support scholarships or. I would say of the extra money so that there would be nothing left, you wouldn't be a profit.
Right, understood. Wow.
I mean, I think in the meantime, can't they just keep, because it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of work. As long as they don't have a quorum of ACH members at any point. And the ACH members who are on, who are meeting, doing these other meetings, report back to ACH, put the written report in our packet. Sonam fills it in. I mean, can that keep going right now until we get these questions back?
Yeah, my my fault. I'm trying to shut anything down.
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to clarify so you guys have.
I I just don't think it's, I think that it's got a life of its own and I think that. This is what we asked ACH to do. If ACH wants to do more than this, then ACH needs to tell us that. That's my, or or if this has gotten expanded, ACH needs to come back and tell us that.
Or just amended.
Well, whatever, give it to us a week amendment, so we can agree with the spoken. But I, I don't think, and I'm sorry if you've been giving reports of. The ACH and I looked at some of those packets and there's very little in there. Just an update from bicentennial committee. Could be the, I mean, I didn't even see a sample logo on any of them. So I mean, there's this, you know, there's decisions being made that are supposed to be, I think. Hey, we're gonna think about doing this. What do you think?
Yeah, we'll get more detail. I mean, because we would pass the logos around. Here's ones we're considering. Have more detail on our actual report, but we'll make sure that it's. Represented in detail in detail.
I think that's a failure on whoever was the ACH. I don't want to make people on this committee feel like they did something. Wrong. That's how it's coming across to me. Maybe that's not how you intended, but I think we do have a structure where we have a lead on ACH. And if that was done and she wasn't doing that or whatever, I mean, it wasn't happening and so just moving forward and we have a plan. But I don't want people to feel bad.
No, I just, I just think that there needs to be more communication between the two different bodies. And we started this off with the idea that it's. The reason I liked this is because the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. Has been looking for eight years or however long we've had this on ways that they could participate in the last two parts of this. Culture and heritage. And to me, this bicentennial fits exactly that. It's a prime example of that. But if they're not communicating, whether it's through staff or the liaison or whatever it is.
But they think there are a very compelling reason for why everything felt as a crack. You know, so.
Bated breath. I'm just saying, I'm asking that. And I don't know, I don't know if anybody's for agreeing or not, but I, I'd like to see more regular. Feedback, I mean, because it is a city-led initiative. And it's the city or the villagers that's turning the 200. As a committee, which is why all the groups are important to be involved, but I think we just want to know, right?
I just, I don't, I I don't, I don't think anyone blaming anyone. I think we're just trying to work through this. And the fact of the matter is. You know, we can place blame wherever we want, but if what has happened has happened. And we're lucky that we have one and we just need better two-way communication going forward.
Are are you seeing a expenditure of money between now and July 1st?
Well, yes, and we we kind of um. Uh, made our ask. I mean, Josh knows a little bit of our direction and and what the next six months will pay out. And of course, it's, you know, it's a whole year, but um, obviously we work fiscally, so. Um, a little different timeline. Wall, ballpark, maybe you're, you know, uh, if if you guys. Want to think about this and and how we can develop the events. Um, you know, it's gonna be on par and maybe even a little grander, so to speak. As what it costs to put on the Planer Festival. You know, there's similarities. We're gonna need tents, we're gonna need, there's gonna be music. So, uh, not taking in selling of paintings to help us. Break even on that event. It would be about the true cost of that event.
Can you guys just lay it out?
Absolutely.
On a sheet of paper so that, you know, we can get an idea of what it is so that we can figure out what it would be to do. A budget amendment or create the line item or.
You know, for this, from memory, it'd be roughly like 35,000 dollars, right? Is that? So that.
So, 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 so what we're looking at, just put that about. But lay it out, we're gonna have to do that, but you're not gonna have to buy the tent until 2024.
No, for sure.
Unless you need to put a deposit down. You need to put a deposit down, then we have to go to check.
Most of the expense will be in the 23, 24 budget. Because that's gonna be the this big celebration. Uh, and the dates had not been confirmed yet. That's why they haven't been published is because we want to get approval from council. To, um, for the June 20th to 23rd.
That's in your email somewhere?
That, well, it was in my email, but I think. That, well, it was in my email, but I think in the notes that Josh put up, he said that they had been decided. So there's a little bit of, and he also says there's five people on, um as officers, since I'm aware. So there's just a little bit, but yes, so the dates we were asking for rec, we're recommending June twentieth to twenty-third because that falls Thursday to Sunday and June twentieth to twenty-four are the dates that the city was planned, that the village was planned. And so, and so we were bringing those, that tonight was part of the, is that um reasonable time is that this committee does something to be thinking about as well, because we have not. Anywhere yet.
So, that sounds good. Michelle?
I presume that this is speaking place in downtown. Downtown.
Details.
And, and like La Fontaine is considering, you know, doing something on their property and so. So, don't prove the DDA can participate financially in different, they have different laws and regulations, but they have, they have a structure that allows remarking promotion. So that's something that um is needed, that's also something we can take to the DDA for assistance.
So we can put together that, that budget, um anticipated from January to June for this budget um is twenty-five to five thousand, which we were taking to ACH. To ask them if all the ten thousand they have, um if they would be able to support that.
I would say just write it up so we can see it and have something to talk about. Then you can, either Sam can bring it to us or do you want to come help explain it?
I actually have a question regarding the number of people that from ACH can be in the would participate in the meetings of bicentennial committee. Because I think there was, when I joined, that we joined ACH as council representative, I asked for the, whether I'm attending bicentennial because Donna used to be on that and you said that somebody, Lynn is now attending, but that makes three of you or?
We've got to have four because of.
Yeah, yeah. So.
But ACH is eleven, right? So four would be six.
And we have a vacancy.
Doesn't affect.
So I'm happy to attend those meetings as well if that helps with.
Right, so we have our, we're putting together the budget.
Maybe some of the events you know are gonna occur. That hasn't already been put together. Thank you. Good night.
Can, can we, um, what, I mean, I know that Sarah Kowalski is also.
Sure. Okay, so M, do you want a formal motion to amend the agenda? Do you want to move, approve M eight ahead of M seven?
Some.
Move by Sanam is a second?
Second.
Second by Joe? Cam, did you call a vote to approve moving M eight ahead of M seven?
Yes, Summer, yes, Summer Farah.
Yes.
Griffin, yes, Shaws.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Motion carries, you know, this. Um, we're on M eight consideration of waiving the donation requirements for final donation. Joe, make a motion. Please, the ten thousand donation requirements. By Joe, donation. Motion by Joe, second by Dan. A little special.
Did you repeat that again?
Was a motion to, to waive donation requirements, the donation requirement of ten thousand in order to accept the final donation and have a plaque of the name by the. Yeah, if it could, please call the vote to approve the donation.
Griffin, yes, Summer Farah.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yeah.
Shaws.
Yes.
Arum, yes, Summer, yes.
Yes. Motion passes, appearing. We're now down to, back to M seven, discussion of the sheriff contract renewal.
So, um, our contract with the sheriff expires at the end of the year. Um, the sheriff has provided uh the figures for um the next four years for, for renewal. These are the same figures that they have provided to all of their contracting partners throughout accounting. I wanted to um provide these to council in advance of, of requests to approve the contract to separate any concerns or any, any issues with moving forward with the contract renewal with the sheriff.
When will I be informed of the contract renewal?
It, it would likely be in October.
Zach?
Yeah, I, as far as I can tell, the last time the city really examined this was when it was a village in around two thousand and five. I am not entirely happy with the service we've received and I've heard from other folks and by that I mean we, we can ask, but we can't direct. I give two examples I've experienced. I have multiple times when La Fontaine was parked in her car carrier in the middle of the street or on the side of the street, called dispatch and waited over an hour for someone to get there. Now, it's not a high intensity thing, but we're supposed to have someone in our area. None of those times did anyone show up for an hour and eventually had to go review something. Uh similarly, next to the River View Cafe, uh there's a car that routinely parks across the sidewalk, locking it for anyone who's handicapped. Then I called in, no one has come out in the forty-five minutes that I was in the area. My village had one thousand two hundred people, had its own sheriff police department. We were able to direct, we, the council said if someone's going thirty in a twenty-five, give them a ticket. We don't care whatever percentage, ten percent. Everyone knew you did not drive fast through town because there is a very good chance if you're going thirty-one, you're gonna get that ticket. Um additionally, because it was our department and people are there for a long time, they don't rotate in and out as their needs in other places. So you get to establish those folks, people who may have mental health challenges, they know the people better, they, they know the community. Um, same thing with the schools, they know all the students, all the students know them, it's a very good um relationship they have. Something that's new since the city last examined this is that there's a one percent village. I believe it's a one percent for the, it's a one and a half percent for the public safety and health. It's, it's somewhere between one and a half. That's going out from us to the Washoe County. If we had our own constabulary, that would stay here. So the math is a little bit different than it was before. Um, at the very least, I would want to have some understanding from them on how we can better direct what they're doing. And I've also never been satisfied that we are always a net donor to other communities, are out of area time, has never come close to being even, we're always subsidizing other folks and that doesn't feel right. That's all.
Well.
I, Zach, I do agree with you on a couple of points. I do, I would like some, you know, feedback, direction, accountability from them on, you know, communication and how to get things done. Uh and also, sorry, it's the, what's the last thing you just said?
I don't remember.
Yeah, that too. I think that that, that is legitimately could be examined better because it is pretty lopsided. And I know they've explained it to us before, but I mean, we get a lot of complaints about things.
I may jump out in time. We also provide a facility for other communities we're subsidizing.
Right.
And that.
I'm not suggesting we move away from this, I'm just suggesting I want some information in these areas. Because I, and last thing I'll say, I, I had an opposite experience with you and in a local police force. And I think there are advantages and disadvantages and some of the disadvantages I saw in the small town with their own police force, I, I wasn't really thrilled with.
Well, and, and so for the, the cost that, or for the expense that we are paying for the sheriff's office, we, we would not be able to provide a one-to-one or what the, the sheriff provides. You know, they, they, they provide a one twenty-four hour on-call emergency and patrol service. Um, and, you know, the subject of what we can do time. Their current staffing and, you know, their ability to, to fill shifts. Um, but for the, between five hundred and six thousand that we're paying, um, you know, that's not the same number of officers that, that we'd be able to, to provide the community that we're working from the sheriff.
Kim?
I, I appreciate the point. I guess if they're actually not here though, good talks at that time, we're not actually getting what we're paying for that either, so we might not be able to get like the same coverage like they're saying and I think, yeah, how that would be important. But it sounds like we might only be getting what we think we're getting, making the time somewhere.
So, so, I mean, they, they, they do account for interior and outer area time. Um, and any, any time where we are not being serviced to the level that we are contracted to, um, we do get essentially a, a, a credit hour, um, that, that they can call bank hours. Um, and then either when, you know, for example, there's an event or a parade or something, or when there's some level of need over above what we contract for, they'd want those bank hours to, to double the total of that time. Um, at the end of the year, if we have more bank hours than, um, if we have, if we have a net positive bank hours, then, then we do get a, a refund essentially.
So, previously, we would look at this. I think we were, we were contracted with Dexter Contract, Much Contract, also sort of a group. And it was three and a half for us, three for Dexter and two for Webster to get to eight and a half. And then that also included the sergeant, that was a certain period that nobody was. Sergeant and sergeant, because of the number of people. And one person, we have one deputy that's on, supposed to be on duty overnight, I think, and then hired that in levels during the day. So essentially, we're paying for, I mean, it's easy to say we're not getting what we're paying for. But you gotta think about it as whole package. We are getting a sergeant, which we're not paying for. It's literally not the numbers, nobody's paying for it, not us, not Dexter, not Webster. So it's one person that's there, manager, a higher person up that's working there. Two, if you think about it, there's a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week. You have one guy that's gonna cover all week. You need four guys, right? Four, maybe forty-two hours a week. Got at least four people, right? If these numbers are even close to what it actually is for us to do it, it's gonna be way more. That doesn't count for cars and all the other stuff that goes in there too. Now, it's possible we could do the same thing, we could talk to Dexter Contract, Much Contract and say, hey, let's all get together or Dexter Computer Own Police Department and contract out to Webster and Dexter and set it up that way so that we have the same type of situation. It, it, it's not just a matter of, though, the people aren't here, right? The, the thing is, is the way it's set up, it's set up so that we're sharing services with the other communities so that we all have some level of twenty-four hour service because there's not that many emergencies in the area that we don't need to have. Three police officers on duty all night. And we do get some advantage providing the office in the city. Again, it's the same thing when we used to have a fire department. Having the fire department in the city was an advantage, just like having the sheriff's department here in the city is an advantage. There are advantages to doing what we're doing. That being said, if you want to go through and do a study and look at it, there's an old one out there, just be a matter of updating it, everything is in there. So it should be not easy, but easier than it might be. Zach, Village Pickney's able to do it too. So I don't think it's possible, it's a policy of what level do we think is appropriate?
Yeah.
Village Pickney is the gold standard that we need to hold back for.
Well, we talked about, we talked about our sheriff. Sorry, can I say something?
No.
That was harsh. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I was using as an illustrative that Little Picknick can manage to stand up its own police force without bankrupting the budget. That is probably something that we can do if we decide it was important for us and the service for citizens. And I agree that absolutely, just because you can though, doesn't mean it's the best option. If, so any township, at least at the, contracted for forty-four deputies or something like that, they literally were paying millions of dollars for the county because they felt it was better to have the county manage their police force than them to do it. Seriously, it's, it's not just a black and white issue. It's a tough, it's worth looking at, but it's a tough.
So I, you know, I don't know. Your goal in putting this out there was to ask, are we ready to look at this for approval? I appreciate you putting it out there for me to hear ahead of time. I guess the, if we have service issues, we have the ability to sit down and talk to them about the service issue. I'm generally not unhappy with the Washoe County Sheriff. I think they do an excellent job. And they've done an excellent job on way more examples than we can pick up. I, I, um, I don't know what's this direction that we're talking about. I mean, if, if we want them to ticket more, is that what we're saying? Is that what more people are saying? Because then if the report said that out of a hundred and fifty-six, or whatever the number was of spouse, and half of them were tickets, would we still be saying, why aren't they ticketing enough? I don't, I don't know how we're measuring their judgment on whether a ticket should be issued or not issued. I, 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 I do, I do understand. I do understand, and I've received a lot of calls on, you know, the perception that somebody is speeding on my street. And, and Justin could be sheriff. We still wouldn't be able to stop that perception. And unless the car is there to see it, you're not gonna be able to, there's no post facto ticket issuing. So I, I'm, I, I'm trying to, I, I think if we have concerns about service, we ought to sit down with Sheriff Clayton or Sergeant Hunter.
Aludan.
Lieutenant, lieutenant, huh? You know, and, and, and talk to him about the concerns. Um, Zach, that, that car carrier thing, we ought to be able to talk to La Fontaine about it.
I've walked into the service manager.
All right, well, there's other ways to get through to them. You know, but, but I, I, I'm generally not unhappy with the Washoe County Sheriff. I do think that, you know, that they're, 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 they've, they've had a, a good ability to predict their budget four years at a time. Which is not something we've been able to do at the heart of it yet. And I'm trying. You know, I, I remember years ago when they went through and looked at the cost of. The police service units. And I'm, I'm not sure if there's. Sergeant salary in there or not, Joe, to be honest. I can't remember, it's just a line out of a salary on the breakdown we get, we don't get to know what in it is a salary. Whether it's just the people or whether it's higher ranking folks.
We're wondering whether we're getting a sergeant.
Okay. I'm not trying to be real that kind of, I just don't know what's in there, it's not transparent enough to me to remember that or know that. But, I mean, if, if there's a, if there's a list of, of things that we should be talking to about, we should be ready in January when the sergeant or lieutenant hunt. Comes to us, and I, truthfully, I don't want to surprise him at the meeting. I'd rather get him a list of their key concerns ahead of time and then let him propose how they're gonna do something different to. So it's a proactive step instead of us just unleashing on them. And if we know the issues we have. Let's hit them.
Do you know if we're using the radar sign that, that we have? Would that be a good direction?
So, so we, we use it? Actually, we're investing in a second one.
Do you know what I mean? Would that be a good avenue that, you know, and that's what we do, that people call in, we have complaints, we set it up. I mean, would that be a direction?
Yeah, that, that, that we know usually our first stop is, is if we get a complaint, we need the best free data rotation for radar.
I mean, that would be more of the people that are saying there what radar does, right? I don't know.
I just wanted to say on the similar notes that. To me, if there, I, I agree that if there are issues, we should first go to them, you know, we. Should not really throw the baby with the bathwater out, right? It's like, what, what are we, what are our concerns? We can have a discussion. And see if those are, can be addressed, right? The other side of it for me is also going back to what. Was mentioned of having something in a. County level versus for our city, there are a lot of benefits of having the experience of. Larger county. And there is also the person that runs multiple centers that operate at the same time. I can tell for sure that it is much cheaper to plan of doing all of that based on a group of people. Versus every individual unit and creating that from all scratch to, to do the same work. There is a lot of benefit from. Officers that can work in different communities and can bring the experiences back and forth. And having that sort of overall view is. It's a benefit. So there are, yes, downsides and things that we might miss, but it, can we. Work some of that with the sheriff department and say, these are the things that we would like to see. As, as you said, Sean, my experience with residents was also that there is a lot of positive with the sheriff's department. So I don't think we are at the point to say, oh, they are so bad that we need to stop this. No, I think there is a lot of good work that they do, there is a lot of good experience that they bring that we benefit from. If there are concerns that we have, like any other group we work with, we should give our concerns to them and. Have a discussion of how those can be resolved.
Justin, are they planning on updating any language like Village City? Or is this just a carryover amendment?
So, yeah, I believe it's been proposed as, as the carryover amendment, but. Rejuncta, sure, Clayton.
Do you actually have the contract that's said that we're gonna be looking at next meeting or no?
Well, so, so what they're asking us to.
It's just this is. Just this letter here?
Yeah. And, and that is consistent with the previous. Two or three contracted agreements.
They do update the language. Okay, so we'll see this next time then. We won't get a pre read in the time of.
Well, I just, and I rejunctum see if, if we can bump up to next meeting, see if it's available in January. At the four.
We should talk to him right then. Okay, enough on that one? By my math, we're ready to, um, what was page three?
I will resolution to delegate and alternate.
I'll move the resolution with these amendments. The top paragraph, a regular meeting in the city, Dexter, held on slash the non, so it would be held at the address. Called at 7:00 PM. Then after the present absent. Strike preamble and, so it will be the following resolution was offered by myself and supports it. Since I'm getting nitpicky with the third, whereas we have a semicolon instead of a period. Then the bigger question is, it's not clear which fiscal year they're referring to, whether it's the city of Dexter, which is different from the WR, or any. Be theirs or ours? Theirs. And is it calendar year? I believe theirs is calendar year. Okay, then the, be for the result would be that the appointee shall serve the role during the 20. 23 calendar years, since it's the same thing, it'll be easier if folks forget. Until successors are appointed by this council. And then on the back page 70, update the date. From November 8th, 2021 to November 28th, 2022. That's my motion.
Okay, moved by Zach, seconded by Jamie, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, when you're ready, this is the vote to approve the resolution to delegate and alternate, subject to the changes made by Zach.
Sam Pharaoh.
Yes.
Yes, Michelle's.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Karo, yeah, Griffin, yes, Kyo.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you, we are down to the table item, which was M3. And by my account, we've just passed a motion to table a discussion until after the new business is completed. And the previous motion that was on the table that we were discussing was. Motion by Joe, seconded by Watt, to postpone the original postponement until new rules have been adopted.
Actually, I have a point of parliamentary procedure, I don't weave a motion to postpone, a motion to postpone has standing.
I'm not sure it does either. I was gonna try and talk about, but we didn't get there, okay.
And I was just gonna withdraw my second, so. I can't do that. Man!
I misunderstood.
Yeah, I did too. When I was. Didn't issue it as well, but I didn't understand it.
Okay, so. Can we quickly just vote on the.
What's the postponement motion?
Well, the original motion that he said, before agreeing that the B, the B motion was not valid. Yes, okay, excellent. What I heard was motion to postpone discussion until the next meeting. And adopt the current rules until that meeting. I might have said it backwards, you might have said motion to adopt the current rules. Till next meeting and postpone the special, whatever, but it's essentially that, right Zach?
Yep.
It's the best I could do right now, that down, if you got rapid firing out there. Alright, so is there any? Discussion on the postponement? Yes, because I'm mineral, no, because we don't need to do it. Never done it, it's never been an issue, the rules will last the place, it's just.
I also read your council rules to say that they're valid for 60 days, it was 60 days, right, my packet is so. I mean, the way that I read that is 60 days. So if we were past 60 days, I would also think that we didn't have any council rules, which was not the way I read it is that we.
Yeah, my understanding was also that that 60 days is put in place for the council to be able to have the discussion at the same time that there is. There are some rules to, to make things move forward, otherwise we really can't do. Things, so my understanding was also that that 60 days is implied that continuation, and so giving council enough time to. Stop that they want to do any change.
I think the motion is just making explicit what is the understanding, that's how many people maybe don't want to support the motion. So to me, I just see it as making explicit something that we don't really agree about. Either way, there's clearly a lack of clarity in rule 12. So when we get to. Doing the rules, I think we need to revisit that. I wasn't able to find it for the constitution of Michigan, but for the constitution of North Dakota. They adopt their rules and procedure during the organizational session in December before the regular session convenes in January. But I don't know if that standard practice across the state that they are actually doing the rules outside of the regular session. I mean, that's why this is an awkward thing, because when it happens in other bodies, they have a different meaning to do it.
You're suggesting we need more meetings?
Yeah, that would make them shorter.
You think this would be any less clear in a different meeting? Or more clear? Sorry for.
Yeah, well, so these were written by folks without deep understanding of parliamentary procedure, so that's why there's lack of clarity. There is a general concept of all parliamentary law from the Anglo-Saxon tradition starting in battle tastings that. Well, they didn't have legislation for a while, but through the English common law that future legislative bodies cannot be governed by previous ones. That were the case, we make a motion to eat pizza on Thursdays, we can't reconsider it except on the rules of reconsideration. That's why there's by default, previous actions. Are up for reconsideration when there's new bodies at. It's nerdy, I'm sorry, it's actually. See, that's a whole team on what we're doing back in the day, so. We got to dive deep into this one little nerdy thing.
Yeah, my only concern with that, and the wording of it for that motion, is that it will read an in additional. Thing to it, then it is making it a thing. Instead of really clarifying it, it puts it as a precedent and. Adds, to me, adds to something that is already. Set in place.
Well, actually, maybe I have it in my mind over here, but my motion was to affirm the continuation. And postpone discussion to the next meeting. So it's clarifying that our intent is that these things still exist. Belt and suspensions.
Joe.
Part of the council rules is establishing what we do. Each body.
He's speaking that way.
I'm sorry. Establishing council rules has always been. Done by the, I mean, everybody does, everybody does their, everybody legislative body, celebratory body, does their own rules. It is clear from literally decades that the council rules do not cease when council changes. Composition, it, just the way it is. I mean, Robert's rules has not been static since the Anglo Saxons did whatever they did in England. And it changes, it's changed over time and it is part of it is that. Our rules say specifically that we have the council rules, and when we don't have council rules, then Robert's rules applies. And our rules say, within 60 days after election, you have to do it. Our rules say that the rules are still valid for that period of time.
What, what is it? I, I missed where it says these are still valid for the 60 days. It doesn't say what happens if we don't after 60 days, it doesn't say that automatically.
It doesn't say they are invalid. And precedence and past practice by this body has been as such. So the motion is not needed, it's not necessary, and as Sam said, it creates a bad precedent. And every single time you have an election or a change, you gotta vote on the rule that you're thinking. You're making things more difficult and more complicated, please.
Well, and previous or behavior shouldn't be precedent or wrong behavior, it shouldn't be a gold standard either.
Then you should stop doing corporate behavior.
Mr. Chair, you have a personal tab?
No, I don't want any of this, I, I mean.
You're the call question.
We're both leading, reading this from a different perspective, and that's the problem.
You want to call a question?
Is that a motion?
It is. That's what the move was.
The motion is to postpone discussion until next meeting and adopt the council rules until that meeting. It's called the vote then.
Yep.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Karo, yeah. No, Griffin, yeah, Shaw.
Yes.
Kyo.
Yes. Go along with. Council comments tonight, we'll start with Zach.
Uh, just for anyone who is confused, Pawnee, Indiana is a fictional town, doesn't actually exist. It's a sitcom on NBC that used to air. And I guess I'll say, well, it's great to hear what happened in 2000, 2003. I would say that we have moved on and we should always be striving a little better. And I, I hope there are no more personal tasks or character tasks in that side of the system, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah. I had just a couple of comments about the leading pedestrian interval, so I think they're raised by Mr. Austin. I think I've seen the one implemented at Maine and Baker, I think that's simply. And I wasn't able to clarify to Mr. Austin, but I have seen the correction to the timing of pedestrian crossing at Dexter and Harbor and Dan Coe. That I think has been a help, but. Sounds like perhaps even the leading pedestrian interval there and also at Meadowview, I don't know if that's in place or not.
I, I, I thought they also did.
They also did the.
Yeah, at Dan Coe.
They might have, and I can check that too.
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I guess the only other comment I had is on, and I guess it's something I guess I could have drawn attention to when we were approving the agenda. But it would be nice when the agendas are put together, it seems like we're gonna have. Discussions that might be anticipated to be drawn out, which I think I could have anticipated without looking at some of these items. For example, moving up this Tidio Fountain or some, you know.
So, so. Yeah, so, so, so I, I was waiting on this member of us to send me her letter, and I wasn't sure whether or not we'd get it in time. I, I didn't want to hold up the preparation of, or I didn't want to hold up the ordering of the other. Agenda items while waiting on that, so I bumped it up to the bottom. And I, I, I actually didn't think that she was gonna come tonight, but then she, she let me know this afternoon that she was playing.
Yeah, what an interesting meeting of.
Yeah, what an interesting meeting of everything under the sun, the agenda, so that was kind of fun. One of the things that I did not get a chance to elaborate more on, on the Sheriff's report. I understand the incident reports are public. And when somebody goes and looks at an incident report is a very purposeful look. And what is Sheriff's report's narrative to this body, to me, should have a different note to it. And I would be more than happy to discuss that one lieutenant hunt is here. I also want to say that the bicentennial and A C H have been putting a lot of amazing work into this. And even though there were some points that we needed to clarify to make sure that we are all on the same page, that just by the effort that they have put in this, I can tell that this is going to be a fantastic bicentennial. So I'm very excited to see that shaking. And that's all.
What?
I had the same thought as Jamie about the agenda items, and I felt bad when I, I think I moved the agenda. And I think maybe, you know, if you want, Jamie, if you and I want to maybe put our heads together, let me see people. And I mean, before the meeting, we can figure that out pretty easily and amend the agenda ourselves. And I think it's something we all could be more cognizant of to help out the public who comes here. I would like to note, this is the longest meeting we've ever had, and I have an X-ray at eight o'clock in the morning, so hopefully I would be unbroken. And thank you for, like, you know, helping me get no sleep before.
Yeah.
Apologies, you know, if you've been sustained in the buildup and some counts to work on and some procedures to get better at, and I will, and I will do better. Looking forward to working on the goals and making sure some of the things that contribute to that are limited.
Well, I have one thing to add. I don't usually speak under this mic, but I thought, yes. Because I was really tired of talking about council rules. Look forward to doing the next meeting. My goal is putting these on here tonight, so that we can get past them. They're not meant to be a crush. Inherently know what our rules are because we have a good code of conduct. The doctor is right. Okay, I didn't know, yes, beside that, I don't think that our rules expire. That's why the agenda is in the same format as it was before. There are certain things that carry over. Anyway, I look forward to getting those. Other topics that we could be digging, we could be digging a little deeper. So I'll come back around to non-range participation. Yes, Pam?
Number two sixty-two, Victoria Drive, Dexter. In sitting as the reporting secretary for Planning Commission, and maybe while I can fill in here, the discussion about the property, Mill Creek. I believe what Mr. Cardy said at the last time it was discussed was that Planning Commission decides how many parking spaces they'll waive, but City Council can decide the cost for the in lieu of spaces. And so it seems rather extreme to change in ordinance when that company does have an option, which is the in lieu of parking. And just so much discussion around that. Clearly, there are members of this council that want that project to happen and other members of the city that want it to happen. But the back and forth about it just, you know, from resident seems extreme when there is an option that that company has to take. So you guys do have some control unless I'm misremembering. Please correct me, anybody.
Zero dollars.
Yes, and so you have control. It just seems like they don't want to do in lieu of parking spaces, which seems unfair to everybody else who's done it before them, which is the point, I believe, of Mr. Cardy during that last meeting. And so that's my comment about that. And my second comment is, wow, I am so disappointed with this meeting tonight that I'm literally shaking. So shame on whoever deserves it. And that is from a resident.
Thank you for your comments, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Okay, and seek the motion for adjournment.